Councillors, please stand. Almighty God, we, the representatives of the citizens of the city of Brisbane, are assembled here to strive and care for the welfare of our city and all its people. Lord, we ask that you guide us in the decisions we make here today. Amen. Brisbane City Council acknowledges this country and its traditional custodians. We acknowledge and respect the spiritual relationship between traditional custodians and this country, which has inspired language, song, dance, law, and dreaming stories over many thousands of years. We pay respect to the elders, those who have passed, into the dreaming, those here today, and those of tomorrow. May we continue to peacefully walk together in gratitude, respect, and kindness, and in caring for one another and this country. Please be seated. I declare the meeting open. councillor Hutton, any apologies? No apologies? Noted. Confirmation of minutes, please.
Mr Chair, I move that the minutes of the 4,718th meeting held on Tuesday the 15th of August 2023 be received, taken as read, and confirmed.
Seconded.
It has been moved by councillor Hutton and seconded by councillor Mackay that the minutes of the 4,718th meeting of council, held on the 15th of August 2023, be received, taken as read, and confirmed. All those in favour say aye. Those against say no. The ayes have it. Councillors, I would now like to call on Mr Tyrone Noonan, who will address the chamber on the Brisbane Winter Session Festival and the Lord Mayor's Creative Fellowship. Welcome, Mr Noonan. You have five minutes.
Mr Chair, Lord Mayor, and councillors, thank you so much. Thank you so much for the privilege of addressing you all today. Firstly, I would like to thank the traditional owners of the land on which we stand, the Turrbal and Jaggaera people. I would also like to pay respect to their elders, past, present, and emerging. I am honoured to be here, and not only because this moment completes a circle in my life. The last time I had the distinction of speaking in City Hall was prior to receiving an award from then-Lord Mayor Alderman Roy Harvey for winning the Brisbane Youth Civic Forum. That was 1984. I regard the confidence I gained from this as directly contributing to my success as both a musician here and overseas. As you may be aware, my sister Katie and I founded George, one of the most successful bands to ever emerge from Brisbane. We sold over 300,000 records, and I ended up living in London and New York City for a few years, before deciding I wanted to come back and contribute to the culture of Brisbane. I would like to thank the Lord Mayor, councillor Vicky Howard and her team, and all the other council departments who all pulled together to help successfully deliver this year's Brisbane Winter Sessions Festival. I know the musicians of Brisbane are extremely grateful for the support in this chamber, and on a personal note, it was a privilege for me to be festival director this year. I know the musicians of... Live music is one of the key cultural components of any thriving city. It creates and binds communities, ignites our spirits, soothes our souls, and fuels our night-time economy to the tune of $20 billion in Australia last year. Utilising multiple iconic venues in Fortitude Valley and beyond, Winter Sessions showcased more than 35 independent artists covering a range of genres, including rock, folk, funk, pop, disco, over two weeks. It was amazing. I believe this extraordinary initiative that provides a platform for musicians to develop and excel, as well as giving audiences the opportunity to experience the magic of live music, can continue to be built over the next nine years, until it becomes one of the keys that will establish Brisbane as one of the great cultural cities of the world during the 2032 Olympics. And that's what we all want, to have Brisbane be seen for what it is, a world-class cultural city. I think you are all doing an amazing job, and I'd like to get involved in whatever way I can, and I have more to contribute than all things music, as I've always been immersed in multiple areas of art and culture. I am very grateful to be the first adult recipient of the Lord Mayor's Creative Fellowship, which afforded me the opportunity to travel to Los Angeles for a two-week research mentoring and network expedition. With a focus on the effects of COVID on artists in America and how they survived, thrived, or pivoted, I found myself discovering great music, amazing art, and a thriving creative culture in the city that will host the Olympics right before us. The people who contributed to my experience are too numerous to mention, but the mentorships I received in LA from expat Hollywood composer Bryce Jacobs and multimedia guru Anjay Liguez were invaluable, including knowledge of major film production music preparation and how to utilise NFTs in my arts practice. I gained important insights through attending performances and meeting musicians covering all styles of music at venues throughout Southern California. I also had the opportunity to visit multiple recording studios, including Oscar-winning film composer Hans Zimmer's facilities in Santa Monica, as well as Grammy-winning rock producer Chris Lord-Algie's complex in Tarzana. I also spent some inspiring time at the brewery, which was established in 1982 by the Carlson family, and is now the largest artist colony in America, with over 600 artists living in 450 live-work studios. One of the most extraordinary places I visited was the recently opened Future Factory, a sprawling venue across several old warehouses and open spaces in downtown Los Angeles. Future Factory has successfully fused art galleries, live music, dance parties, fashion, and hybrid art exhibitions into a symphony of cultural expression. Both of these venues reminded me of my experience at the Ormond Multimedia Centre while living in Dublin in the 90s, and later from similar events while living in both London and New York, including the danger-list events and punch-drunk theatre productions like Sleep No More. Immersive events like these can transform and bind multiple art forms, as well as the surrounding communities that support them. They can also recalibrate the experience of artists operating in their silos. Brisbane is uniquely positioned to capitalise on this growing trend. We have the space, the imagination, and with the 2032 Olympics, the audience, and the opportunity to create a dynamic new cultural direction. This is a critical time for the arts, a time to strengthen our cultural cachet as we are going to be Queensland showcase to the world.
Thank you, Mr Noonan. I'm sorry, your time has expired. Please feel free to take a seat.
Thank you.
Can I invite councillor Howard to respond?
Oh, thank you, Mr Chair. It gives me a great deal of pleasure to respond, and I knew that we wouldn't get through everything in the five minutes, Tyrone, because you're so... You were such a great ambassador for all of the things that we've been doing recently, and I really want to say a big thank you for coming and talking to the chamber today, because we really do appreciate hearing firsthand. There's many occasions when I stand up here and talk about all the fantastic things that Brisbane City Council does, but to hear it from someone who's experienced that and to know just how much that has meant to not only you, but also I know that Winter Sessions has been fantastic for our emerging artists, and I really want to say a huge thank you, because it really is great to hear that feedback, and particularly from an established artist such as yourself. And I'd also like to take the opportunity to remind the chamber that the Lord Mayor's Creative Fellowships will open for applications once again from November 6 until the 18th of December. So while it might seem a little while away, please take note to talk to your creatives in your local areas, and I'm hoping that we'll be able to encourage Tyrone to maybe talk to some of the people that might be thinking about applying for that fellowship, because I know just how much that has meant to him. Tyrone, I also want to thank you for the leadership and the service that you've provided to this city. I know that you've talked Brisbane up wherever you've been, and that is exactly what we want to happen. We want everyone to experience the great things that we have here in Brisbane. And because whilst we've been able to give you support through the fellowship, you've gone over and above and given us back tenfold. Thank you for all of the work that you've done in supporting initiatives like the Winter Sessions. And what makes Winter Sessions such a wonderful initiative is how it supports our talented local musicians and gives music lovers another reason to visit our exciting entertainment area precincts. Again, I can't impress enough how important it is for our local and emerging artists to know that they can stay right here in Brisbane and have a career, and for you to be that example is just amazing. So once again, Tyrone, thank you for your contribution to the Winter Sessions and for everything that you've done to support our creative sector, and we are proud to claim you as Brisbane's own and to look forward to continuing to work with you long into the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Noonan. I'm sure that the councillors here would love you to come back and do an encore at some time.
Yes, finish my speech.
Councillors, we'll move on to item four on the agenda, question time. Are there any questions of the Lord Mayor, Civic Cabinet Chair, or any standing committee? Councillor Huang.
Thank you, Mr Chair. My question is to the Chair of the Finance and City Governance Committee, councillor Cunningham. Councillor Cunningham, over the past few years, Brisbane has endured a global pandemic, a flood, interstate migration, and now inflation and cost of living crisis. As Australia's largest local government, managing these challenges has been an ongoing battle. Can you please update the chamber on recent survey results reflecting on people's opinion during this time?
Councillor Cunningham.
Thank you, Mr Chair, and thank you to councillor Huang for the question. Mr Chair, Brisbane is a great place to live and work, and it certainly is a great destination for visitors, and haven't we seen that in recent times? As our city grows, the Shrinna Council is committed to ensuring that we maintain the lifestyle that makes our city so great. So I am pleased to update the chamber on recent results of the Better Brisbane Index, an externally conducted survey commissioned by council, which shares the story of life in Brisbane and how we compare to the rest of the nation on a range of metrics. This research study provides robust, independent, and representative data that will continue to be used by council in all decision-making and strategic planning across all of our divisions. Once again, the results are strong for Brisbane, with 92% of local residents positively rating their quality of life, and 89% recommending Brisbane as a great place to live. These ratings show that Brisbane residents are more satisfied with the quality of life in their city than residents in the southern capitals of Sydney and Melbourne, and also higher than in our neighbouring South East Queensland council areas. Mr Chair, like all of us in this chamber, I would hope, the vast majority of residents in Brisbane love living here, and they wouldn't want to live anywhere else in Australia. Three in four residents in Brisbane agree, compared to just two out of three in Sydney and outer South East Queensland, 58% in Melbourne, and 53% in neighbouring South East Queensland council areas. With our city's population growing and our profile on the rise since becoming an Olympic and Paralympic host city, it is reasonable to expect that concern about how our city will change in coming years would have increased compared to the past two years, and, Mr Chair, it has somewhat. But, Mr Chair, the level of concern in Brisbane remains lower than it is in Sydney, Melbourne, and the rest of South East Queensland, and also lower than it was in the five years pre-COVID and before, when we were awarded the 2032 Games. Mr Chair, we all know times are tough at the moment for our residents, and the cost of living remains a key concern for many. Mentions of inflation and the cost of living when asked about the most important issues facing Brisbane more than doubled compared to the previous survey. And that's why, in our most recent budget, we had a laser focus on easing cost-of-living pressures with an $80 million package of relief, including one of the lowest rate rises in Queensland, less than half the rate of inflation at the time of handing down the budget, slashing green bin charges, and slashing the cost of entry to our pools during summer. General concerns about housing and population growth also increased in this survey. Mr Chair, as has been said many times, we are Australia's fastest-growing capital city. Some of the statistics I read out earlier are part of the reason why we're on the receiving end of much of the interstate population shifts in Australia. As the Lord Mayor has said, people from around Australia and the world are voting with their feet, and Brisbane is getting their vote. We continue to focus on how much we can manage this growth, and through our sustainable growth strategy and by working with the state government, we can ensure the growth occurs in the right locations. Mr Chair, there are challenges facing all levels of government, right around the country and indeed right around the world. But there are clearly reasons for optimism in Brisbane. When you compare our results to our South East Queensland neighbours, and particularly the results from Sydney and Melbourne, Brisbane has a bright future, and the Shrinna Council is determined to continue to deliver for our residents.
Thank you, councillor Cunningham. Any further questions? Councillor Collier.
My question is to the Lord Mayor. It was widely reported that your speech at the Matilda's reception on Sunday included anecdotes about your family movie nights, but no mention of support for women's facilities at council-owned sports clubs. As you would be aware, dozens of council-owned sports lease sites have no suitable women's or girls' change facilities. The existing $200,000 grant programme doesn't come close to funding most of the works required to retrofit or build new facilities. Why don't you really support women's sport at council-owned facilities?
Lord Mayor.
I'm not sure how I can answer a question that's based on no fact at all. The reality is, we know councillor Collier is new here and still learning the ropes, still getting to understand how things work, but I don't know how many times we have to have completely inaccurate questions based on inaccurate information peddled by the opposition.
Point of order.
Point of order, councillor Johnson.
There's only one way to say this. The Lord Mayor is deliberately lying to the chamber, Mr Chair. He absolutely referenced Bender Like Beckham and other movies.
Councillor Johnson, I don't...
So councillor Collier's account is correct.
Councillor Johnson, just one moment, just one moment. Councillor Johnson, I'm going to remind you that in this place, when I am speaking, you do not. That is in the standing rules. Doing the opposite of that is an act of disorder. I do not uphold your point of order. Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Mr Chair. This administration has invested more into upgrading parkland and facilities and sporting facilities than any other administration. But I do remember when a plan was released for what is our premier women's precinct, sporting precinct. What did Labour and the Greens do? They opposed it, and they said it should be ripped up. Ripped up. So I know councillor Collier wasn't here at the time, but maybe her colleagues should fill her in on their history of opposing upgrades for our premier women's sporting precinct in the Downey Park precinct, because this is what's called in football terms, an own goal. Because we see Labour making absolutely false claims, yet forgetting the fact that they opposed upgrades for our premier women's sporting precinct in the city. They've also forgotten about the incredible upgrade that is being rolled out in the Nudgee Rec Reserve, which will see an opportunity for even more women to get involved in football and touch football and other sport activities up there, and that is just one of so many upgrades we are supporting and delivering right across the city. Well, I can think of more than two that you've opposed, councillor Cassidy, but the reality is...
Just, councillors, please, just one moment. Councillor Cassidy and Lord Mayor, can I remind you if you are directing comments to each other, can they go through the chair, please?
Thank you, Mr Chair. And while councillor Collier is busy scoring own goals, I won't interrupt, but the reality is, this administration has a very proud record in supporting all sporting facilities across the city, but particularly encouraging and supporting and providing funding to those organisations which are growing female participation. Why? Because we are a team that absolutely, not only believes in increasing female participation, not just in sport, but in politics, but in politics, which is why we have 60% of our team, 60% of our team as female, we actually practise what we preach. We practise, we believe, we follow through, we fund. These are the things that we do. As usual, Labour can't stick to one position on anything, and for anything they say should happen, you don't have to go back too far when they've been opposing the same thing.
Point of order, councillor Cassidy, just one moment. Lord Mayor, point of order, councillor Cassidy?
Yeah, just on relevance, the question was about the dozens and dozens of council-owned lease sites that don't have female change facilities, and why the Lord Mayor doesn't support the rollout of those. I'm not sure where political representation came into this.
Councillor Cassidy, relevance, yes, speech, and debating your point of order, no. The Lord Mayor has plenty of time to address your question. Lord Mayor.
And so, in terms of our support, the support is real and it is ongoing, and whether it is the $200,000 that we put towards South Rugby in councillor Johnston's ward to, in fact, build female change rooms just within the last couple of months, or the $250,000 for East Rugby in councillor Collier's ward, to do the same thing, to do the same thing, or whether it's the fact that we've just opened the latest round of Better Suburbs Grants, where people can apply for even more funding. I mean, look, it is quite clear, Mr Chair, that these people ask questions, but they don't ever listen to the answers. They don't ever do the research. They don't ever base their question on any fact whatsoever. They simply get together as a...
Councillors, to my left, you've asked the question, but you don't want to hear it in silence? Let the Lord Mayor respond. Lord Mayor.
They simply get together as a political group and ask political questions without any substance, and I think it is disappointing. But in the end, we will continue our support for female participation, whether it's in sport, whether it's in business, where we introduced the Women in Business Grants, or whether it's political representation, which you can see being delivered in this side of the chamber but not that side of the chamber. It is very clear that we absolutely support female participation in our community, and we've been growing it, we've been funding it, and we've been practising it.
Thank you. Are there further questions? Councillor Owen.
Thank you, Mr Chair. My question today is to the Chair of the Transport Committee, councillor Murphy. Councillor Murphy, the Shrinna Council's award-winning Brisbane Metro project is now receiving international attention. Can you please update the chamber on the latest in the Brisbane Metro project, including those keeping a close eye on its progress?
Councillor Murphy, would you care to make an award-winning response?
Well, thank you, Chair, and I thank councillor Owen for the question, because I know councillor Owen is keeping a very close eye on the Brisbane Metro project herself, Chair. She mentioned in her question, though, there's many other people keeping a close eye on the project, and last week, 35 delegates from the American Public Transport Association, which is known as APTA, were here in Brisbane to learn all about Brisbane Metro. The group were visiting as part of a study mission to Australia and New Zealand to explore sustainable and equitable public transport. The delegation included 35 senior executives from the public transport industry in the United States, representing transit authorities in Chicago, LA, Washington DC, Seattle, Jacksonville, San Francisco, and Dallas, just to name a few cities, Mr Chair. Together, they represented the transport authorities for over 21 million American residents. The delegation spent most of the day with Transport for Brisbane, talking about the future of transport and sharing insights. And while I'm on the record, Mr Chair, I would like to extend my thanks to the delegation for the time that they gave us here in council. It was a real honour to host a group with such impressive expertise right across the sector, and I know that our Transport for Brisbane team learned a lot from them. But we had a thing or two to show them as well, Mr Chair, and there's no doubt that the award-winning Brisbane Metro was the highlight of the delegation's tour. Here in this chamber, we already know that the centrepiece of the Shrinna Council's record investment in public transport is Brisbane Metro. With Brisbane Metro, we will significantly increase the capacity of our city's busway network by around 30%. And just this morning, the Lord Mayor and I celebrated the completion of Platform One at the Cultural Centre Busway Station, where we've added an extra 30 metres to the platform, increasing the accessibility and capacity of that platform by 60%. We know that Brisbane Metro will make public transport trips in our city more frequent, more reliable, and more enjoyable, and people are getting on board with our metro and its accessible, modern systems. I talk regularly, Chair, to a range of stakeholders about Brisbane Metro and the benefits of the project. We've now had visitors from almost every major city in Australia, and everyone who learns about the project or sees the vehicle for the first time is blown away by how transformative this will be for public transport in our city. But I'll be honest, Chair, the delegation from the American Public Transport Association was a group of very experienced international transport leaders, so I must admit, I was a bit nervous to see what their impressions of our project would be. Seattle, as we know, has the Space Needle. Chicago has deep-dish pizza. LA has the Hollywood sign. Menfo has, you know, rock and roll music and blues. Washington is, well, Washington is Washington DC, and San Francisco has the Golden Gate Bridge. Dallas has the Mighty Cowboys. But what do they all have in common, Mr Chair? They loved Brisbane Metro. They loved it. And they were amazed by the vehicle, by the innovative flash-charging system, by the onboard experience and the manoeuvrability of such a long vehicle. The delegation was particularly impressed by the flexibility of the system and how it could be easily rolled out in cities with all different types of existing infrastructure, whether it's road, transit lanes, or busways. And I think, personally, it's only a matter of time before we start to see metros pop up around the United States, Chair. I also have to mention some of the comments from Dorville Carter Junior, who is not only the president of the Chicago Transit Authority, but is also the chairman of APTA. He has a very long history in public transport, mostly in Chicago, but he's also served in national roles in the US Department of Transportation. Dorville told us that in his 40 years in transport, Brisbane Metro is the most innovative public transport solution he has ever seen. They were so impressed with the vision and commitment that the Lord Mayor has shown to public transport in our city, that I will read these words from Dorville into the hand side. It takes someone who has strong leadership and strong vision to make these things happen, and there is no question in my mind today that you have vision here in this city. We are very excited to be a part of seeing what that vision is going to look like. Well, Chair, we are also, in this chamber, very excited to be part of that vision, and I know the people of Brisbane are too. Brisbane Metro has now received award after award, accolade after accolade, and visit after visit. And now, at the very apex of the public transport academy internationally, we are generating a level of buzz that has never been seen before in the industry, and certainly never been seen before from a public transport project at a little old Brisbane. So as we inch ever closer to the opening day of Brisbane Metro, Brisbane residents can be assured that the strong, stable leadership of Team Shrinna has what it takes to put our city on the map.
Councillor Griffiths, do you have a question?
Ah, yes. Thank you, Mr Chairman. My question is to the Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, another day, and unfortunately, another koala death on your LMP council's watch. A koala was hit and killed on Boundary Road at Camp Hill last night. That makes 22 koalas have been killed at that location the last five years. 22. We've seen lots of social media posts from LMP councils, including yourself, councillor Adams, and councillor Cunningham, claiming a speed reduction of 10 kilometres would reduce koala deaths, but it's clear that nothing has resulted from this change. In fact, since the reduction in the speed, two koalas have been killed. When will your LMP get on with fencing this section of White's Hill to reduce koala deaths, or are you more interested in media than koala lives?
Lord Mayor.
Well, I think the question that we all have in our mind is, when will the Labour Party stop playing politics with koalas in the same disgusting way that they have continued to do? These are the people who said that a reduction in the speed limit would solve the problems, and now they're claiming something different. These are the people who claim to know better than the experts, who have said that the fencing is not the answer, and in fact, could make the problem... fencing is not the answer and, in fact, could make the problem even worse. Could make the problem even worse. Because one thing we know is that koalas in that precinct move in a permeable way throughout the suburb. They move through Cooperoo, they move through Camp Hill and White's Hill, and they're in people's backyards as well. And front yards. And in fact, even councillor Cunningham had one in her front yard just recently. If these koalas were fenced into the reserve, that would put the population at another kind of risk as well. Because we know that the koalas are moving around the area not only to find fresh leaves and food, but also for breeding purposes as well. And they're particularly active at this time of the year for that reason. And so to fence them off into a smaller section, the experts know that is not the silver bullet solution, that is not the answer, the simplistic solution that the Labor Party is peddling here. And so, we have always indicated that we are-
Councillor Cassidy.
We have always indicated that we are ready to put up any fencing that is recommended by the experts, not by politicians, not by Labor politicians in particular, but by the experts. And that's exactly what we've done. There's already sections of fencing up there, there's fencing in plenty of other locations where it has been recommended, but right in this location, where the koalas are roaming throughout the suburb, to fence them off would have other unintended consequences which would cause problems for the koala population. And so, stop pretending through you, Mr Chair, councillor Griffiths, that you're some kind of expert in koalas. You're only an expert in playing politics, and that is a real shame. Because no one cares more about koalas than the people on this side of the chamber, which is why we've bought record numbers of bushland parcels of land, often opposed by the Labor Party. In fact, bushland in this precinct that's been opposed by the Labor Party. And look, where are the Greens on this? They don't even comment about the koalas. They don't talk about the environment, they don't comment on koalas. The Labor Party plays politics with it. The Greens are missing in action because they're more interested in social issues than in the environment. And we see what a-
Point of order, Lord Mayor. Point of order, councillor Griffiths.
Lord Mayor, the question was, when are you going to fence this area? Are you saying you're not going to fence it at all?
As we've already pointed out, Mr Chair, we will fence whatever the experts advise us to fence. We've made that really clear. And councillor Griffiths, last time I checked, is no expert. He might have been here for 21 years, slumbering on a safe seat, but he is no expert in koalas. He's an expert in politics.
Councillor Cassidy.
He's an expert in playing politics. And in the time I've been here, some of the most disgraceful political games have been played by councillor Griffiths, Mr Chair, and this is one of them.
Are there further questions? Councillor Landis.
My question is to the Chair of the Infrastructure Committee, councillor Wines. Councillor Wines, the Shrinna Council's plan to upgrade Beams Road recently reached an important milestone. Can you please update the chamber?
Councillors, show some respect, please. Councillor Landis, please continue.
Can you please update the chamber on how investing in road upgrades gets Brisbane residents home sooner and safer?
Councillor Wines.
Thank you, Mr Chair. And can I thank councillor Landis for her keen and ongoing interest in what is a vital project for not only her residents but all of the North Side. I am really proud to be able to say we have signed a contract with a preferred tenderer for the Beams Road project. The tenderer is a company that we, that would be familiar, particularly to you, but many of us called De Valls. De Valls, of course, did the Gresham Street Bridge replacement. They have experience with council, and we are confident that they will be able to deliver this project. We have always said that we will be starting the project to the west of the train line, down to beyond Dorville, and that the Dorville intersection upgrade would be one of the fundamental actions that we take in the first tranche of works, and that is what is happening. The works will include four-laning of the road, a bike way that doesn't exist there at the moment, and we have also worked very closely with the state government with the interface with their potential project, the Beams Road open-level crossing removal, which we have had members of our own council as part of the technical working group and the steering committee, because we would like to see that delivered as well. Disappointingly, there has been some baseless accusations that we have used the federal government to, as an excuse for the delays in the project. That is not true. We have been delayed as a result of their 90-day review, which has now ended. Those projects that were within the review have not been provided advice about whether they would proceed or not. So for those of you who are concerned about the Lindham level crossing proposal, we are still waiting. Now, some members of the Labor Party State Parliamentary Team have said that we have hidden behind, that we have hidden behind the federal government because we have, in their words, "botched" the project, which has a tenderer, has a contract, and is well on its way. Now, that particular MP is, of course, Mr Bart Melish, the member for Asglee, who is very quick to tip a bucket and then very quick to change his mind, in my experience. So as I know, Bart Melish, for those who don't recall, tipped a bucket on the North Side tunnel proposals, and then three months later was cheering, cheering the reversal of the state government's position.
Point of order, councillor Wines. Councillor Cassidy, you have a point of order.
Yeah, just on relevance, I was actually very interested in this project, and I'd love for councillor Wines to stick to the topic of Beams Road and why he cut Stage 1C. And why he cut Stage 1C from the project, we want to know.
Thank you, councillor Cassidy. We can hear from councillor Wines now. Thank you, councillor Wines.
Thank the leader of the opposition for his protection. So much needed to keep me back on topic. But yes, Mr Melish has accused the council of hiding behind the federal government to delay the project. But because Bart doesn't miss a chance to reverse on himself, inside the comments, he was asked directly by a resident, "I understand the approvals issue," says the resident, "can you guarantee there isn't some mud being thrown in all directions?" Which Mr Melish replies, "Council got special dispensation last week to progress this from the federal government." So he reverses his own criticisms within his own post. That's a fascinating position. Now, he then goes on, after accusing us of hiding behind federal government delays on our project, Mr Melish has then inquired from a resident in his own area, "When is the Linkfield overpass getting fixed?" They inquire of him, to which he says, "We're waiting on the federal government review." Hey, I do enjoy, look, it's just good fun to see Mr Melish, at least with the North Side tunnels, he waited three months to change his mind. He didn't do it within his own post that same day. But look, I've also noticed, it was raised with me, what will we call it, a media outlet headlined that was heavily critical of the Beams Road project. And I thought, Brisbane Now, I've heard of Brisbane Now. I read about it here on the Facebook page of Labor candidate for margin, Darren Mitchell's page, where he says, "With the demise of many community newspapers, did you know the Labor for Brisbane team provides community news?" Called Brisbane Now? Oh, hmm, we must check the source, Mr Chair. Is that fair and balanced content? Is it fair and balanced criticism? No, it is not. No, it is not. Can I assure all people interested in the Beams Road project, the contract's been signed, the works have begun, and I look forward to the completion of Section 1A, followed by 1B, followed by 1C, then 2, and then B in the coming years.
Thank you, councillor Wines. Councillor Massey, you had a question?
Thank you, Chair. My question is for councillor Davies. Over the past years, former councillor Jonathan Shregganathan, and most recently myself, in relation to 2426 Archibald Street, have contacted you to encourage the purchase of land when it comes to market, routinely providing information about vacant land that would be suitable for a pocket park model for the suburb of West End, which is very low in green space. Considering this, recently residents in West End on Raven, Roger, and Ida Street received extremely unclear and confusing letters from Brisbane City Council about amendment changes to the LGIP, indicating possible resumptions of their properties for a park. While they have received communication from planning and parks teams suggesting this is indicative only, they continue to live in stress and anxiety. Through your committee, will you support the designation of the proposed park as set out in the draft Local Government Infrastructure Plan Amendment to be returned to unspecified? And support the BBC focus on a more robust and adaptable model of small pocket parks that is supported by myself and that takes account of the local challenges of obtaining vacant land due to the largely protected traditional pre-1944 homes in this area?
Just one moment, please. Just one moment, please, councillor Owen. Councillor Massey, do you have that question in writing? It was rather long and extensive. Councillor Johnson, can I remind you that we do not call out across the chamber? Yes, really. Councillor Massey, it was just very long, the question.
I can go straight to the question.
Please.
Which I have the idea-
Councillors, just one moment, councillor Massey. Quiet, please. Councillor Owen, your point of order.
Thank you, Mr Chair. In accordance with the meeting's local laws, that was a non-compliant question-
I don't uphold your point of order.
-and can be taken on notice, I ask you to rule.
Councillor Massey, could you read the question component out, please, again for councillor Davies?
Through your committee, will you support the designation of the proposed park as set out in Draft Local Government Infrastructure Plan Amendment 1B to be returned to unspecified? And that Brisbane City Council focus on a more robust and adaptable model of small pocket parks that is supported by myself, that takes account of the local challenges of obtaining vacant land due to the largely protected traditional pre-1944 homes in this area?
Thank you, that's a very long question. And possibly two questions. Councillor Davies, would you care to respond or would you prefer the question in writing?
Thank you, Mr Chair. It was a very lengthy question, and I would like to take that on notice and in writing. Thank you.
Noted. Any further questions? Councillor Hutton.
Thank you, Mr Chair. My question is to the Chair of Economic Development and the Brisbane 2032 Olympic and Paralympic Games Committee, councillor Adams. Deputy Mayor, the Shrinna Council's Growing Precincts Together Programme for this financial year has now begun. Can you please update the chamber on what's in store for this year's precincts, including some of the outcomes from last year's programme?
Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mr Chair, and thank you, councillor Hutton, for the question, because business is growing in Brisbane under the Shrinna Council, and we are working hard to ensure our local Brisbane businesses are supported, connected, and have the right tools in their kit to be able to take on the day-to-day running of a small business. They are the backbone of our community, supporting thousands of families, local jobs, and making Brisbane an even better place to live, work, and visit. But too often, we do find our small business owners are so busy working in the business, they don't have time to take a step back and work on the business. And that's where we can step in and offer a helping hand. Launched in 2022, the Growing Precincts Together Programme has worked closely with local suburban shopping strips as part of a three-step plan to activate, refresh, and promote their precincts. We have over 300 suburban precincts in Brisbane, and they range inside from just a few tenancies to a few hundred tenancies, each with their own unique character, identity, and offering. The Growing Precincts Together Programme is all about bringing these businesses together to build a sense of community and connection and develop a shared vision for how they would like to see their businesses grow into the future. In our pilot year, last financial year, the precincts of Racecourse Road and Rosalie were supported through the programme. Racecourse Road, who had struggled very hard, struggled strongly after the construction of Kingston Smith Drive, and then, of course, the COVID pandemic, and the Rosalie Village, which was severely impacted again by the February 2022 weather event. More than 170 businesses in Racecourse Road and 60 in Rosalie came together to work with our council's economic development officers through a three-step programme. It starts with the understand stage, working through various audits and insights from businesses and customers to understand where the opportunities lie and where improvements can be made. It's a chance to get under the hood of what drives these local precincts, what challenges the businesses are facing, and how precincts could grow to attract more visitors. And then it draws in the locals and visitors and what keeps them coming back. The next step is to engage, bring the businesses together to run through the findings from customer surveys and precinct audits. It's also an opportunity, in some cases, for businesses to meet each other for the very first time, get to know each other and start to build those business-to-business relationships. During these regular coffee meets, businesses are encouraged to share their ideas and discuss a way forward, which council takes away to develop what becomes the third step, the precinct playbook. This is where it all comes together. And there is no single solution, but rather a combination of different support measures that we tailor to suit the needs of each of the businesses and the precincts as a collective. The playbook creates a framework of opportunities under key themes, promote, support, refresh, and activate. And we've seen some fantastic outcomes with these businesses through one-on-one business coaching, shopfront makeovers, vacant shopfront activations, digital marketing training, and precinct promotion campaigns. We are fortunate enough to have one of Brisbane's most beloved artists, Deborah Hood, participate in the first vibrantly vacant shopfront activation in Racecourse Road, more of which we will see roll out across the city. I'd also encourage locals in this area to keep an eye out for the soon-to-be-revealed month-long celebration of local businesses in Racecourse Road. Kicking off in mid-September, the businesses will have a range of experiences and specials available across retail, dining, health and wellness, and more, as they bring together everything they've learnt over the course of the programme. With these two precincts all but wrapped up for what's been a hugely successful pilot, we now turn to our two latest precincts-together locations, Banyo and Winham Town Centres. Yesterday, we launched Stage One with a community survey, and soon businesses will be receiving a knock on the door from one of our ED officers to start the engagement on the programme. Both these communities are unique in their own special way, and we invite anyone with ideas on how to promote these precincts to visit the council website and share your thoughts. Community surveys like this are how we can engage our local communities and get them involved to make Brisbane even better. Our city is growing, and that brings new and exciting opportunities for our local businesses to grow and to flourish. Most importantly, this is one of the many ways that we are making sure that Australia is the most small business-friendly city in the country. Thank you, Mr Chair.
Thank you. Councillor Cassidy.
Thanks very much, Chair. My question is to the Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, just six weeks after the start of this financial year, you're bringing a budget review with some massive changes. This first review of the 2324 budget shows you have cut $85 million in the materials and services budget, the bread and butter of what council does for ratepayers every day out in the suburbs. So, Lord Mayor, can you detail which services are you cutting to save this $85 million?
Lord Mayor.
OMG. Councillor Cassidy should be embarrassed by that question, because, among other things, it shows that he simply cannot read a financial statement. Now, I would suggest councillor Cassidy, through you, Mr Chair, that you contact the CEO and sign up for the Australian Institute of Company Directors course and learn how to read a financial statement, because it is embarrassing that you have peddled a figure which is completely inaccurate and wrong.
Councillor Owen.
The papers being voted on today show a $54 million increase in expenses, not an $85 million decrease. That's what the papers actually show. And what councillor Cassidy seems to be referring to is the statement of cash flow. Cash flow. Does anyone know the difference? And maybe councillor Owen, do you know the difference between cash flow statement and other parts of the document? The reality is, our expenses increased by $54 million, not reduced by $85 million. He's digging the hole even deeper. What's happened in terms of cash flow is that we actually made a number of payments earlier than anticipated on a number of critical projects. Projects such as the Mogal Road corridor upgrade, the Green Bridges Programme, and also more purchasing, 4.2 million more purchasing of asphalt and aggregates, because we were resurfacing more roads than anticipated, earlier than anticipated. And so, that was paid in the previous financial year rather than projected in the current or the new financial year, why there's a difference in cash flow. But councillor Cassidy, really, do the research, understand the financial statements, stop peddling porkies, and like, this is sort of basic stuff. This is a person- This is a person who wanted to be Lord Mayor of the city of Brisbane. This is a person who is the leader of the opposition and has been here for a while now and should know something basic like reading a financial statement. I, I don't want to believe that it's a deliberate misreading of a statement. I believe it's a misreading of the statement, but he has gotten it completely wrong. The reality is, the documents that are coming through show the budget remains balanced and in small surplus and in fact that surplus has grown slightly bigger as a result of this budget review. It shows that we're actually spending more, not less, contrary to what councillor Cassidy claims. And this is a, this is a theme that is repeated time and time again. We see chicken little statements being made about cuts, but they can't actually point out any cuts. They can't point out any cuts. They claim that the suburbs are missing out. They can't actually illustrate anywhere where they were in administration spending more than what we're investing. They can't point out anywhere where we're not spending more than ever before. The reality is, it all comes down to basics like understanding a financial statement and that is where this Labor opposition is desperately lacking. And this is also really concerning, given that this is, you know, the alternative administration of this city under the Green Labor coalition of chaos, can't even read a financial statement. They want to be running Australia's largest council. Can you imagine the chaos? Can you imagine what that would bring to Australia's largest local government? It would be a debacle of epic proportion. We've heard councillor Cassidy in the past getting up in this chamber and ridiculing the fact that we seek to run a surplus budget.
Point of order, councillor Cassidy. Just one moment, Lord Mayor. Point of order, councillor Cassidy?
The Lord Mayor, I think, attempted to come close to detailing the $85 million and he rattled off a couple of projects in his attempt at covering this up, but the question's quite specific. Give us the list, give us the list on relevance, give us the list of all those projects.
Thank you. We're not going to debate points of order, just making that clear for the second time this morning. Lord Mayor, this afternoon, Lord Mayor?
I mentioned already, Mr. Chair, that of the changes in, in terms of cash flow, that some of the major projects that are listed account for a lion's share, including the Mogal Road corridor upgrade, where we made a payment early on that project, earlier than anticipated, which impacted on the cash flow. So it reduced the cash flow this financial year but increased it last financial year. We've just come out of the end of a financial year, the payment was made last financial year and so it was effectively brought forward. So if councillor Cassidy is criticizing us delivering earlier than anticipated, then, you know, that'll be an interesting claim to make. We've also made an earlier payment on the Green Bridges project as well.
Lord Mayor, I'm sorry, your time has expired and that also, that also ends question Disappointed councillor Murphy. Lord Mayor, Establishment and Coordination Committee?
Mr. Chair, I move the report of the Establishment and Coordination Committee meeting held on Monday the 14th of August 2023 be adopted.
Seconded.
It has been moved by the Lord Mayor and seconded by the deputy mayor that the report of the Establishment and Coordination Committee meeting held on Monday the 14th of August 2023 be adopted. Lord Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Last night, all of our assets were lit up in yellow to support Queensland Road Safety Week. Last year, regrettably, there were 299 lives lost on Queensland roads and that's the highest since 2009. Obviously, improving road safety is something we're all very passionate about and that's something that we're supporting as well in, in many other ways, but also through the lighting up of assets to bring attention to the work that's being done and the work that needs to be done. Tonight, the Story Bridge and Victoria Bridge will be lit up in purple and yellow to support Brain Injury Awareness Week. This annual campaign raises awareness of brain injuries and its impact on people's lives, including celebrating those who live with a brain injury every day. Also tonight, City Hall will be lit up in red, white and blue to support the Brisbane Fashion Festival. The festival kicks off tonight in King George Square, showcasing and supporting our local fashion designers and creatives who do an amazing job in what is a global industry. They are competing with global fashion houses, they're competing with people who can make things a lot cheaper in mass production than they can here, but it's fantastic to see our local fashion businesses and designers doing so well and kicking goals. And this is about supporting those local businesses and showcasing the work that they do. Tomorrow night, all of our assets will be lit up in green and gold. Councillor Adams, what is it for?
Nine years until the Paralympic Games.
And that's all right. Councillor Adams told me in the first place, so it's, it's all good. But it's, it's a fantastic milestone. We obviously celebrated nine years until the start of the Olympic Games and nine years to the start of the Paralympic Games as well, which is just as important for our city and our state and something that we're excited about. And councillor Adams, actually, right from day one as the chair responsible for the Olympics, also became the chair responsible for the Paralympics. Other people took a little bit of time to get there, but councillor Adams was a fan and an advocate right from day one. On Thursday, City Hall will be lit up in red and white to celebrate the Indos Conference. This is the largest Indonesian business event in Australia and it's taking place right here in City Hall and obviously something that which we're proud to support. This Thursday is also Ukraine Independence Day and the Story Bridge, Victoria Bridge and Radcliffe Place will be lit up in blue and yellow to recognise this day. Independent for 32 years since the collapse of the Soviet Union, the Ukraine is fighting to get their independence or maintain their independence from the unlawful and terrible attacks from their neighbour. On Friday, the Victoria Bridge, Radcliffe Place and Story Bridge will be lit up in white, blue, yellow, green and black to support Australian South Sea Islander Recognition Day. This is celebrated annually on the 25th of August and recognises the day the federal government officially declared Australian South Sea Islander as being a distinct cultural group. Also, on Friday night, the Sandgate Town Hall and City Hall will be lit up in purple and orange to support Dress to Express Day. This is the last event of the Brisbane Fashion Festival and will take place in the Queen's Street Mall. The event encourages people to dress to express their unique style in solidarity with domestic violence survivors who are taking control back of their lives and they're unable to, sorry, and they're often unable to control through, as a result of coercive control, what they were wearing on a day-to-day basis. But the expression of their own individuality now through what they're wearing is something we should celebrate and champion. Finally, on Saturday night, City Hall will be lit up in red to support the Lady Bird Gala Dinner. The Lady Bird Foundation does important work supporting parents experiencing the anguish of losing a child and their dinner on Saturday night is their main fundraising event for the year. Well, over the last few weeks, Brisbane has been an incredible hive of activity. It's been something that we've all enjoyed seeing with the FIFA Women's World Cup and something that has inspired us all. It is been inspiration, it has been inspirational for a number of reasons, too many to count. But firstly, it's a little bit of a taste of what will happen here in 2032 with the eyes of the world on our city holding a huge international sporting event. And that is something that obviously brings a level of excitement to it, but more importantly, it was inspiring due to our Matildas and the amazing effort that they put in. Obviously, we would have loved them to progress further in the competition, but they broke all the records. They broke every record when it comes to women's football. They've helped this FIFA Women's World Cup to be the best ever, the most successful ever, the most watched ever. They broke the TV viewing records, they've broken the attendance records and it has all been thanks to their incredible efforts on the field and also their inspiration off the field that they have given us all. It is, is difficult to calculate the impact that their inspirational achievement will have, but I know that it's out there in the community, particularly in our young girls and boys, who are now motivated to get involved in sport and whether it is to play football or whether it is to get involved in another sport. They've seen what the Matildas have done and they've said, I want to do that, I want to be like them. And I can understand that, that is something genuinely exciting. It is, you know, a, a moment that is pivotal in Australian sporting history, just in the same way that watching Cathy Freeman in the 2000 Olympic Games was inspirational. This has been equally inspirational and will be a game changer going forward. I think the, the true impacts of what they have done will take time to flow through, but you cannot underestimate what that impact has been in so many different ways. And so we celebrate our Matildas, we're able to offer them the highest honour that a city can offer, the keys to the city. And I also know the premier has also pledged a statue to be built as well, which is another fitting tribute as well to what the team has achieved. And that was a great announcement that we saw on the weekend. I particularly want to thank the council staff and also their cooperation with the state staff in bringing together what was a big public event in such a short period of time. And literally in about 24 to 36 hours, they had to bring together an event for four and a half thousand people. And the team within council that worked on that, literally every minute counted, every hour counted and they literally rolled up their sleeve, got into gear and they did what needed to be done. These are amazing people and officers that don't make excuses, they don't say it can't be done, they just said, we're going to make it happen and they did. I also thank the state government for their support as well because that was a joint event and it was obviously a great, a great partnership in a very short period of time. I also want to thank the, the same staff who were able to help activate some additional live sites. Now councillors will remember that we had a situation where the South Bank Live Site was bursting at the seams and there was demand for more. And so, once again, at very short notice, we were able to open up King George Square as a live site for the big Matildas game. We were then able to open up River Stage as well. And so that was also done at very short notice and once again, I thank the officers that were involved in making that happen. And also thank the state government for their cooperation as well with some, with some funding support towards that too. Football is one of those things where, yes, you can watch it on TV, but the real experience is watching it in a crowd. Now, if you can't be part of that crowd in the stadium, then at a live site is the next best thing and to get that, that, that community spirit, that team spirit that comes with that is just something truly special. And the other thing I think that the Matildas have done is they bring, they brought a sense of unity to our community, which has just been absolutely wonderful to see. Unifying, it was a unifying moment for our nation, for our city, for our state and once again, all thanks to the Matildas. Seeing people who, you know, would normally be rugby and AFL fans becoming roundball fans or football fans was a great thing. And it just goes to show the unifying power of sport. And once again, that is the reason why the Olympic Games is so impactful as well. Not only is it a big event that brings economic benefits, it also brings unifying benefits. It brings unity in a way that other things can't bring. So really excited about that and congratulations once again to the Matildas and everyone who has supported the Matildas to get where they.
Your time has expired.
Motion for extension, seconded.
We have a motion for extension moved by the deputy mayor, seconded by councillor Hutton. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against say no. The ayes have it. Lord Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Moving to the items in front of us, item A is the first budget review. I have actually read this document.
Yes.
I do understand this document.
Councillor Marks?
It is, obviously, with any budget, it is an evolving living thing. Just like our household budgets evolve, maybe a snap's are in time, I say it's a living thing, councillor Hammond. And just like as things change in our household budget, things need to change in our council budget as well. And so if you can, if you can set your household budget and nothing changes for a year, then good luck to you. I'd be interested to see how that works, but just, just like we're constantly updating our household budget as grocery prices change, as electricity changes, as car rego changes and other things change, obviously, we continue to update our own budget as things change. Now, I might be that things happen earlier than expected, like we've seen in this situation where there were $85 million of expenses anticipated this financial year, where we saw early incursion of those expenses. But we see once again a budget that is in good, solid shape and a budget that remains balanced with a, with a small but reasonable surplus. As I was about to say before I was interrupted, councillor Cassidy has in this chamber criticised us for having a surplus. He thought it was bizarre that we would have a surplus. He's, he's declared that he is not an economic conservative and look, you know, at least he's made his position clear. But we are the opposite. We believe in responsible budgeting, we believe that we should have a surplus and the reason we have a surplus is for unexpected things that do invariably happen. Now, we've seen those unexpected things happen in recent years, whether it's the pandemic, the flood, global inflation, a whole range of other challenges, work skills shortages, they all impact on the budget and they all mean that the budget does continue to evolve as the weeks go by. This first budget review submission sees revenue projected to increase by 38.3 million, but that's largely due to transfers of revenue from the previous year for the continued delivery of voluntary home buyback scheme and also our Green Bridges project. The capital increased by 55 million, 55.3 to be precise. Most of that, though, is for the voluntary home buyback scheme. And so that is additional acquisitions through that voluntary home buyback scheme. But in the, in the wrap-up of the first budget review, it sees an increase in our surplus of 39.1 million. And so, once again, that we keep that surplus for unexpected events that invariably happen. And in this budget review, the surplus gets that little bit bigger to provide that little bit extra buffer zone that we will invariably need going forward. Item B is the quarterly financial report for the year ending June 2023. So this is obviously for the last month or the last quarter of the last financial year, ending on the 30th of June. This report shows that we delivered more than $1.3 billion of capital infrastructure works in the last 12 months leading up to that report. 1.3 billion. 1.3 billion. Like that is an incredible number and, you know, if you look back through year on, year out, you would struggle to see any other year that equaled that number. And so more investment in capital works, more investment in building infrastructure than virtually any other 12-month period in the city's history. And that is something we are proud of. The great thing is that the majority of that investment, in fact, more than 80% of that investment went to the suburbs. 86% to be precise in the last financial year, that's grown to 87% in the current financial year. So $1.3 billion of capital works with the vast majority going up to the suburbs. This is something that we need to continue doing. As councillor Cunningham pointed out in question time, people are absolutely wildly optimistic about the city, they love living in, in Brisbane, they love the lifestyle in Brisbane and the main thing they're concerned about is population growth and, and what that will do and also housing pressures. And that's understandable. That is absolutely understandable, given that we've come out of the pandemic as the fastest-growing capital city in Australia, more people are moving here. And so that's why we need to continue investing in the way that we are in infrastructure. Also point out, there was a $156.4 million increasing contributions, donations, subsidies and grants. This was largely made up of contributed road assets. largely made up of contributed road assets. And this includes the motorway upgrade to Dara Stage One, the Logan Enhancement Project at Heathwood, as well as the Resilient Homes Fund revenue. And so the contributed assets make up a big part of that. And that's effectively work done by others that then become council assets. So they're built by other people, handed over, become council assets going forward. Adding the adding the Resilient Homes Fund revenue onto that as well. Higher interest rates also generated increased revenue compared to the previous year. And that's in terms of the money that we've invested. And so each year, you would be aware that our income comes in in lumpy components as rate bills are paid. So four times a year, there's significant income coming in. And the income that comes in that is not required immediately is invested. And because of higher interest rates, there's been a higher return as well on that money that's been invested. Of course, like households, council faced many increasing costs as well. And that was including a seventy-four point four million dollar increase in materials and services. And that's mainly due to higher service and contract costs, higher fuel costs for bus operations as well. So just like households, we're experiencing some higher costs as a result of inflation. But speaking of buses, the report also showed the continued recovery of public transport patronage. Now, this is a good story because we've seen recent reports where the Brisbane CBD is bouncing back faster than other CBDs across Australia, and particularly places like Melbourne. So more people are coming back into the CBD in comparison to other capital cities. And that is also being reflected in a bigger relative improvement in public transport patronage as well. And so we've seen TFB bus patronage of sixty-four million passengers. And that was up from forty-six point three million passengers just the year before. So that is a big increase in patronage. We've also seen ferry patronage up by a million trips as well over that twelve-month period. So this is a good sign. We expect that to continue. And as we're adding in more capacity with Brisbane Metro over the coming years, we'll see the capacity opened up for an additional thirty million extra trips through the Brisbane Metro project. And so we're seeing that patronage come back on. We're preparing for more patronage in the future. It's a big part of what we're focused on. In terms of other issues, there's, you know, the record of delivery has been unprecedented, and we continue to deliver right across the suburbs of Brisbane. This report shows the funding that's been put into parkland and green space investment, which continues to be at record levels compared to any other administration. It shows continued investment in road upgrades, which is absolutely critical as our population grows, and we'll continue delivering those things that the suburbs of Brisbane need. Thank you, Mr Chair.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Further speakers, councillor Cassidy.
Thanks very much, Chair. I rise to speak on these items before us today. And I'll make a couple of observations about what the Lord Mayor said. If this Lord Mayor was running our household budgets, as he's compared this budget to a household budget, we'd all be broke and homeless. We would all be broke and homeless if this Lord Mayor was running household budgets for individuals in, even, that's right, even if even if we all had the hundred thousand dollars in our pocket like the Lord Mayor does. The second observation is that it's not your money, Lord Mayor, through you, Chair. All the LMP's money. Get around talking as if it's all theirs to play with and equates it to a household budget. And they can just move things around here, there, everywhere, where they want, call them different things and different line items, stop reporting on individual projects and their progress and how much they're costing. They're just, just, it's like a big house of cards, this budget before us today. And it is diabolical for the people of Brisbane because this is proof in black and white that the people in Brisbane are paying more and getting less under this LNP administration. And they know it. And that's why they started changing the way in which budgets were being reported on in this place. So we are seeing cuts to services, a reduction in cash on hand, a massive reduction in cash on hand, and increased debt costs. The Lord Mayor talked about the increased income from interest payments. We didn't talk about the increased cost of interest payments through the debt that this administration has accumulated to fund the cost blowouts on this Lord Mayor's pet projects. So there is a big write-off in assets to be, to pad out the bottom line to cover the massive eighty-five million dollars cut in material and services. I thought the Lord Mayor's explanation was a bit cute in in saying that somehow the budget which was handed down in June and came into effect in July, also in the last six weeks, has had some payments that magically appeared in the year before. I mean, this is ridiculous, Chair. That all of those council payments, as we know as councillors and running our Water Office budgets, ceased in the middle of June. And this budget was handed down in the middle of June, and it came into effect on the first of July. And the Lord Mayor is trying to get us to believe that eighty-five million dollars in expenditure was somehow shifted into the past, as if he's got some time machine. When you look at the statement of cash flows, as the Lord Mayor said, you look at the, I'll jump between the two documents here momentarily, you look at the final review as at the thirtieth of June last year, the final actual number number for materials and services is just over one point one billion dollars when you take out, when you take out write-offs and write-downs. This year, in this amended budget that the Lord Mayor is presenting to us today, that's actually reduced to one billion and fifty-four million dollars. So a hundred and forty-three million dollars now today, a hundred and forty-three million dollars less is expected to be spent on materials and services this year than last year. How does he account for that, Chair? How does he account for budgeting now with this review, not talking about the budget we sent out six weeks ago, the budget as it is today, how this Lord Mayor can account for a hundred and forty-three million dollars less being spent on materials and services than there were last year? Now, Lord Mayor also said that the eighty-five million dollars it's missing in the statement of cash flows is because he had a magic time machine and paid some old bills last year. However, what we do know, again, from the final quarter review for last year, is that three hundred million dollars worth of projects and worth of expenses has been carried into this financial year. So the Lord Mayor is presenting documents today which show this three, over three hundred million dollars in carryovers. Now, that's projects and services that were running behind schedule, that couldn't be delivered last financial year, that he's carried over into this financial year, included in the budget. So he couldn't deliver them last year, is now claiming in this year's budget already he's paying last year's projects off. Are they some of those? Well, maybe. He said Mogga Road's one of them. Well, that's one that's carried over, obviously, because that's behind budget. And the Green Bridges are behind schedule, and the Green Bridges is another one. You know, we had councillor Murphy a year ago today saying that the Breakfast Creek Bridge, it's in an ABC article, he said it'd be done in the next twelve months. And he said this morning, no, 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 apparently it was always, he said he never said that, even though it's there in black and white, that project's been delayed, as well as the Kangaroo Point Bridge. And we all remember last year where this Lord Mayor had to borrow another four hundred million dollars to fund the cost blowouts on those Green Bridges and on the metro. So don't come in here, Lord Mayor, through you, Chair, and say everything's okay. It's sounding a bit Joe-like. Don't you worry about that. It's, don't you worry about that at all. But we are worried. We're worried on behalf of the people of Brisbane. So you wonder why, what the, what is the point of calling the June budget a budget if six weeks later, you're, it's, it's not a budget, it's a sort of, it's a, it's a sort of, you know, a general look and feel document, it's a vibe document, they're going to maybe try and stick to it, you know, they're within a couple of hundred million dollars here or there, but it's not a budget. And given how much has changed, there's hundreds of millions of dollars in changes to the income, expenses and capital. And in the documents before us, no explanation. Lord Mayor rattled off one or two projects, one or two projects, that doesn't add up to the three hundred million dollars that was carried from last year into this year, or the eighty-five million dollars that was magically sent back to last financial year. And the Lord Mayor just asks us to believe him, as if, as if we are that stupid. Materials and services cover things like footpath repairs, road resurfacing, waste collection, tree trimming, playground upgrades, street sweeping, all the basics out in the suburbs of Brisbane. All of the basic things that people expect to be funded through their rates. And especially when the Lord Mayor goes out and puts his glossy brochure out into the, into the letterboxes around Brisbane and says, here is this budget that he delivered in June for this financial year. When did those budget newsletters arrive? Couple of weeks ago. Well, he didn't say in there that he was going to be shifting hundreds of millions of dollars delaying projects. And even the projects that he talked about then were actually last year's projects that were brought forward. Nothing new, nothing new in that budget. And for all the spin of this Lord Mayor and the LNP, you know, he's, he's laid bare today what the actual budget, if we can even call that under the LNP, has been reduced to. So just a few months ago, when he delivered his so-called budget, he said it was four point three billion dollars. That was his claim, that he was spending four point three billion dollars this year. Well, he didn't talk about the figure of capitalized expenses, which is writing down and writing off assets of one point five billion dollars. Of course, that needs to be included in the balance sheet, of course. But you can't go out to the people of Brisbane and claim that you are spending that one point five billion dollars out in the suburbs of Brisbane. You can't go out and say the budget is a four point three billion dollar budget, when in reality, the operations were two point three billion dollars minus, minus capitalized expenses, minus write-offs and write-downs, just like that, yeah, the little sneaky little exercise that councillor Davis let's slip in the drainage budget.
Yes.
More was being spent on depreciating drainage assets than actually investing in new ones
Yep.
in this year's budget. More expenditure in the balance sheet was on depreciation of assets rather than investing in new ones. Doesn't sound like good value for money to me, Chair. And eight hundred and fifty million dollars in wages, that's the budget. That's the, that's the, you know, that's the real budget, not the four point three billion dollars that this Lord Mayor talks about. So you wonder why, when people think to themselves, when they see that four point three billion dollar figure that the Lord Mayor throws out a lot, people often think, that's a big number, we don't see a lot in the suburbs for that.
No.
Yeah, exactly. Where are the billions of dollars being spent in the suburbs? It's because it's little over half, it's a little over half that figure expenditure. And we know that the metro is up to, what is it, two billion dollars now? The two bridges are hundreds and hundreds of millions of dollars now in the inner city. The Victoria Park project blew out from eighty-three million to a hundred and forty-one million dollars this year. So this, this review before us today confirms everything that we knew to be true about this Lord Mayor and this LNP administration. They have totally lost control. The LNP aren't the economic managers that they claim to be. The Lord Mayor, we know in the midst of all of this as well, is writing to people, telling them that he's going to take their homes away, while at the same time, in this budget review, sneaking cuts to materials and services, and overseeing billions of dollars now on blowouts on his inner city projects. He's not out of touch, he's out of control. But the thing is, again, going back to my first point, is that it's not his money, it's the people of Brisbane's money. And he's playing with it as if it's actually monopoly money.
Councillor Cassidy, your time has
Point of order, Chair.
Point of order, councillor
Move for an extension.
Second.
We have a motion for extension moved by councillor Collier and seconded by councillor Strunk. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against say no. The ayes have it. Councillor Cassidy.
Thank you very much, Chair. So on his watch now, we've seen seventeen percent rates increase on this Lord Mayor's watch. And at the same time, we're seeing a diminishing return in each and every budget. Each budget seems to be getting bigger, but when you track the level of depreciation on assets and the write-off of assets to pad out the bottom line, you actually get a real sense of what's being delivered for this massive rates increase. And it's not much. It's actually not much. The devil is absolutely in the detail. People are paying more and they're getting less. So the Lord Mayor said, finally on this item, that you can't look at the statement of cash flows. He said you have to look at the statement, the financial position. Because apparently, the statement of cash flow doesn't matter in a budget, according to the Lord Mayor, except that's just what's actually being delivered. That's actually what's being paid for and being delivered in that financial year. Well, six weeks ago, six weeks ago, in the statement of income and expenditure, there was two billion three hundred and sixty-two million, two hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars allocated for materials and services that we've been talking about. And two billion four hundred and thirty-six million, so more, was allocated in the statement of cash flows. So you sort of got a sense that they're expected to be delivering some of what was carried over from last year and most of what was budgeted this year. Six weeks ago, he was optimistic. The Lord Mayor was optimistic. Well, in the, in the papers before us today, there's now two billion four hundred and twelve million allocated in materials and services. Like the Lord Mayor said, that there was an increase in those papers for, you know, whatever it is, he wouldn't tell us really. But there's an increase in materials and services in the statement of income and expenditure. But in the statement of cash flows, there's been that eighty-five million dollar reduction, two billion three hundred and fifty-one million dollars. So not only is there, is there eighty-five million dollars less in the statement of cash flow, but there's now a sixty million dollar deficit difference between the statement of cash flow. So previously, the statement of cash flow showed a much higher amount than the financial statements. Now it shows a much lower amount. Now, it just doesn't make sense. You can't, you cannot say the eighty-five million dollars was covering something from last year, when you're carrying over three hundred million dollars worth of expenses and and capital expenditure from last year, and claim it all balances. Now, we know they've increased, they've increased write-offs in this budget review by fifty-five million dollars. But that's not service delivery. You can't just write down the value of assets and and write them off entirely and claim you're actually delivering for the suburbs. The Lord Mayor is not being truthful when it comes to these papers before us today. Now, on to the, the final review from last year, the final quarterly review, annual operational plan and progress and quarterly financial report. This report's a pretty bleak one as well, and it ties into the mismanagement of this LNP administration when it comes to this year's budget. Cash is down, this is an important one, cash is down by four hundred and fifty-seven million dollars in a single year. So cash in the bank at twenty twenty-two was five hundred and twenty-nine million dollars. The Lord Mayor budgeted last year to have two hundred and fifty-two million dollars in the bank. There was a change in policy, we know that, using more cash rather than borrowings, even though we've seen borrowings climb. At the same time, we've seen cash decline. But the Lord Mayor ran that down to seventy-one million dollars at the end of the year. So from fi- four hundred and fifty-seven million dollars, down to seventy-one million dollars in cash held, doesn't sound like the Lord Mayor is planning for a rainy day, even though he says he is in his statements. This is at the same time. So while the LNP is running down cash reserves in in the bank, in council's bank account, debt servicing is increasing by millions of dollars as well. So the so-called change in policy and using cash reserves instead of borrowings also doesn't add up when you see the debt servicing costs continuing to climb. And that informs us why this current year's budget is in such a mess. So eighteen months on, the LNP are still blaming the floods for their poor economic management. The only person who is responsible for all this, of course, is the Lord Mayor. There was, there was an underspend, as I said, of a hundred and forty-six million dollars in operational expenses and a hundred and sixty million dollars in capital expenses. So that's three hundred, over three hundred million dollars were the projects that weren't delivered last year and have been carried forward to this year's budget as well. And that's after the cuts that we've seen in this year's expenditure as well. So as we've come to expect, the two key inner city projects that we hear a lot about, even the councillor for Callumvale could only today talk about the metro, the inner city metro, nothing down, didn't, couldn't ask a question about anything down in the Callumvale Ward, like a, maybe a new library or something like that. Nope. Had to be about the inner city metro. We know that that blew out by four hundred million dollars in November last year. What we also know from this final review is that those two projects, the bridges and the metro, in that financial year, more was spent on those than the next one hundred and sixty-three suburban projects combined.
Wow.
More money spent on the inner city metro and the inner city bridges than the next one hundred and sixty-three suburban projects combined. And the report is chock full of carryovers. So those projects are being underfunded and they're not being delivered. They're being pushed out year after year after They're being pushed out year after year after year. You actually really can't even see what isn't being delivered in this budget anymore because of the way the reporting has changed in the last, in the last two years. Now, I know, I know a couple of those, because they've happened in my ward, those two drainage projects that I talked about over the last couple of weeks, the ones that the Lord Mayor announced last year as the only two drainage projects in my ward, and then gleefully re-announced the exact same ones the following year, because they weren't delivered. And carried over and claimed as if they were being funded in this financial year. There are hundreds and hundreds of suburban projects like that around Brisbane that make up that $300 million worth of delayed spending in the suburbs. The money gets shuffled around, the projects get put on hold. The only people ultimately that miss out are people in the suburbs of Brisbane. And what did they underspend on? Well, we don't know, as I said individually, but we know which programme areas had massive underspends last year, and those projects have had to be carried over and delayed, and will probably see them delayed by the end of this financial year as well. In transport, a massive underspend. In infrastructure, a massive underspend. All their talk about road projects, all their talk about transport and active transport and walking Brisbane, all underspent. Underspent, underspent. And a massive underspend in Programme Three, Clean, Green and Sustainable. Parks, drainage, flood mitigation, all underspent last year, pushed into this year, which means more projects will be pushed into the next year as well. The only increase has been funding for the flood buyback programme. It has resulted in less money being spent on flood and stormwater-related infrastructure in the suburbs of Brisbane. So the suburbs are absolutely missing out under this LMP administration. And it, it just beggars belief that on that side of the chamber, there's just 19 nodding heads. Lord Mayor brings these papers in and says, don't you worry about that? And they say, yes, sir. We never see them get up and advocate on behalf of their communities and demand more and ask the questions and say, why are these projects being delayed? Why are you spending less, Lord Mayor, in the suburbs of Brisbane while you're raising rates? Raising rates in some LMP wards as high as seven and a half percent. People aren't getting good value for money. In the middle of a cost of living crisis, we're seeing rates jacked up as high as seven and a half percent in some suburbs, but we're not seeing any return on basic community infrastructure. It just beggars belief why this Lord Mayor can come in here and hold his head so high about such a diabolical set of numbers. But people have an opportunity. And in March next year, they'll be able to exercise their democratic right and mark down this Lord Mayor for, you know, the contempt that he has treated the suburbs of Brisbane with over his time in this job. Change is coming, and we know they're scared. We know they're worried, we know their attacks, their political attacks are getting more and more desperate as time goes on. But the choice will be very, very clear. An LMP administration that continues to focus on themselves and the inner city and jacking up rates and starving the suburbs, or a Labor administration headed by Tracy Price, who will focus on the suburbs of Brisbane? Who will invest in the suburbs of Brisbane and will keep down the pressure on rate payers through investing in the basics rather than in projects that we see blow out by billions and billions and billions of dollars? Change is coming, Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, I rise to support in, sorry, I rise in support of this item on today's agenda. And I think it's very important that we get some factual context, not some fairy tales from, that we've heard from the other side of the chamber. Now, Mr. Chair, through you, there have been some comments made about value for money for rates. And let me just compare the rates that Brisbane rate payers pay on an annual basis compared to other councils. The 2023 rates for Brisbane are $847.12 on average. Logan is greater on 1,010. Ipswich is greater still on 1,054. Morton is greater still on 1,100.
Point of order.
Redlands?
Point of order, Councillor Johnston.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, I know, it's, it's, it's a bit of an issue.
So councillors, please, please, I can't, I can't hear Councillor Johnston, sorry, Councillor Johnston.
No, of course not, they're, they're all interjecting, that's why, Mr. Chair. Yes, you, you've made some very specific rulings about needing to speak about what's in the paper, and this definitely isn't.
Sorry, I'm assuming your point of order is on relevance?
Well, it's, no, it's about enforcing your own ruling, Mr. Chair. I'm not sure what you said was right, but as you've said it, and it's now the law here, my point of order is, you've applied a rule to me, you're not applying it to others. So are you going to? It's not in the report.
I'm not going to uphold your point of order, Councillor Johnston.
Ah, so you can talk about what's not in the report. Thank you for clarifying.
Please continue. Councillor Owen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And to provide further clarity, in retrospect to the statements that were made by the leader of the opposition, Redlands, their rates are 1,131, Scenic Rim, 1,163, Gold Coast, 1,223.97, Sunshine Coast, 1,333. So let's compare that back to the Brisbane rates, budgeted for 2023/24, $847.12 is the average rates. So our rate payers here are getting good value for money. They are the lowest rates in this area of councils. So, you know, from the Sunshine Coast right down to the Gold Coast, and I think that's very important context. Now, just in relation to comments from the other side, and I really do take offence to the comments that the suburbs are a bit, you know, that they're starving of the suburbs. Well, I think it's really important, because this is the Calenvale Ward budget newsletter, and let me say, my suburbs are not being starved at all. A hundred of order items.
Point of order.
All budgeted.
Sorry, just one moment, Councillor Owen, just one moment, please. Point of order.
On relevance, I don't believe the budget newsletter is in the report.
Councillor Whitme, I'm not upholding your point of order. Councillor Owen, please continue.
Thank you. And I just referred to my budget newsletter of 2023/24, which is what this item is certainly about, our budget. And you can't, I cannot understand the, the attitude of those on the other side, because they've got no credibility. When you've got a leader of an opposition who can't even calculate that it has been 10 weeks since the budget was handed down, not six weeks, he can't even do basic arithmetic that a five-year-old can do. So this is really demonstrating that there is that clueless coalition of chaos over on the other side of the chamber.
Clueless. Clueless.
It is just so important to the people of Brisbane that they have responsible financial management that we on this side deliver. Now, I can tell you that from my past experience as a lecturer in Masters of Business and Masters of Professional Accounting and being a CPA for many decades, I can tell you that what has come out of the mouth of the, the leader of the Opposition Day today is absolute rubbish. Absolute rubbish. And I just, I will quote what he said. He said, what is the point of calling a budget a budget? Well, let me reflect on that. My first-year accounting students would certainly be able to tell you that a budget is an estimate for a set period of time. An estimate, which is something that you plan to happen, but then there are certain circumstances that may arise that require flexibility. And this is all done in accordance with the Australian accounting standards. And a lot of the comments from that side this afternoon, I find them particularly disparaging to the accounting professionals that work within council here, because they don't shuffle money around, they don't pad out things to alter the bottom line, as has been, as has been assuaged by the leader of the opposition today. I find those comments disgraceful, because our accounting professionals that work in our finance team...
Just one moment, Councillor Owen. Point of order, Councillor Cassidy.
I claim to be misrepresented.
Noted, thank you. Councillor Owen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I'm sure that the hand side will prove that exactly what I quoted was what he said. Now, it is very important that when we are looking at these reports, that there is true understanding of what these reports actually reflect. And the statement of cash flows is a financial report, which shows where the money is coming from and where it is going to. It summarizes the cash flowing in and out of our business organization during a given period of time. And in accordance with accounting standards, there are certain accounting practices, such as accruals, such as timing differences, such as adjustments that are required to be made under accounting standards.
Councillor Cassidy, please.
Which have been applied through this budget review process. Now, many of the reflections that have come from the other side are quite, quite so much the fairy tale, I believe. It is just so nonsensical as what has been said today. Now, when you have a family who has their own household budget, or when you have a small business, or another, whether it's a small family business, or whether it's a larger family business, or it's a corporate business, they are all required to follow accounting standards when they're doing their financial reporting. There are ways and means to test solvency of a business, and part of this comes through by doing the statement of cash flows. The statement of cash flows is not just for short-term planning, it is also to assess longer-term solvency. And that is something that those on the other side do not seem to understand. Yes, there are certain items that do carry, get carried forward, but there are accruals. And the purpose of doing first budget review, second budget review, third budget review throughout the year is so that we can continuously reassess council's position going forward and to assess how projects are going. Should there be a situation? Like, we all know that from our household perspective, and I'm sure many people in Brisbane would know this, that since March, April last year, there's been 12 interest rate rises. So people have had, people have had 12 interest rate rises on their personal mortgages under, under a Labor federal government. Now, those people in each individual household would have budgeted that each month their mortgage payment would have been X amount. And now 12 months down the track, on an average $750,000 loan, it is approximately $1,700 more per month. $750,000 loan, $1,700 more per month, that each household has to find that extra cash. Now, those people in every household did not do anything themselves to call for that extra increase. They have got to find that, they have got to readjust their budgets. And in council, we have also seen that there have been circumstances where there have been labor shortages, there have been circumstances where there have been material increases in costs. And so for many of those reasons, that is part and parcel why, in our first budget review, we have to review some of these factors. And I take my hat off to all of those hard-working accounting professionals that we have behind the scenes, because I know that they are continuously working through this process and working hard to ensure that rate payers do get value for money in this city. And to say anything different by those on the other side is absolutely disrespectful to all of those hard-working council officers that we have in this organization. So through you, Mr. Chair, I would say to them all on the other side, go and actually get some accounting training, because you clearly need it. Your statements today prove that you do not have a proper grasp on what the financial statements actually reflect, represent, and what they mean. We do not need a clueless coalition of chaos for this city of Brisbane.
Further speakers? Sorry, Councillor Cassidy, your misrepresentation.
Yeah, thank you very much, Chair. I think we can all agree we are talking about council budget today. That's what this was about. So, so the Lord Mayor is responsible under the City of Brisbane Act for delivering a budget to council. I wasn't reflecting in my comments on council accountants, they're not responsible for the budget. This Lord Mayor is responsible for the budget, so that's where my...
Just, just one moment, Councillor Wines.
That's where my comments were being directed, Chair.
Thank you. Thank you, Councillor Cassidy. Further speakers? Councillor Johnston.
Yeah, thank you. I wasn't actually going to speak.
Councillors! Councillors!
I know. I, I was...
Sorry, just one...
I'm saving it.
Councillor Johnston, just one moment. Whoever made that noise, be warned. Be very, very warned. Now, Councillor Johnston is rising to speak, we're going to hear Councillor Johnston in silence. Thank you. Councillor, Councillor Johnston, you've got the call.
I mean, thank you, I'm rising to speak on possibly both items today, but, I mean, doesn't that say it all, that the LMP poke their tongues out at you when you stand to speak on the city's budget? That's what's gone on just then. I...
Point of order, Mr. Chair.
Point of order, Councillor Owen.
I take great offence to that comment, and I ask to be withdrawn.
Councillors! Councillor Strunk, you're pushing my buttons this morning, this afternoon, stop it. Councillor Owen, there was a noise that came from the right-hand side of the chamber. I don't know who did it, I did not see it, I heard it, I don't uphold your point of order. Councillor Johnston? Councillor Massey? Stop it. Councillor Johnston, you've got the call.
It just keeps going on and on and on. Yeah, look, that was a vintage performance from Councillor Owen, and there are a lot of new councillors in the chamber here today. So I'll just say that, you know, 15 years ago, this used to be standard, every finance report, Councillor Owen would hop up and give us the 101, you know nothing about accounting and I know everything about accounting speech. And she did that for many, 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 many years, but we haven't heard it for a while. So I just say, that was a vintage performance today. I didn't hear the actual words accounting 101, but I heard a lot of other things I've heard her say many times. However, all the puff and fury signifying nothing from Councillor Owen and her attempted defence of this dodgy budget by the only coalition of chaos in the place, the LNP, they're the only coalition of chaos in this council chamber. It is astonishing that the Lord Mayor stands up and tries to say, well, you know, the Labor Party 20 years ago, we're really bad. You know, don't look at the fact that we're really bad at the minute, but just remember, they were really bad before. The, the budgeting of this LNP administration, led by the Lord Mayor, who the deputy, sorry, the opposition leader is exactly correct, the Lord Mayor is responsible for the delivery of the budget in this city. It is the one thing he's personally responsible for. However, he seems to have delegated it off to a bunch of people who seem to be unable to deliver on even the most basic of projects. Footpaths, footpath rollovers, stormwater, stormwater rollovers, parks, park rollovers. And the budget reports before us today, both wrapping up last year in the first budget review, show the level of mismanagement and incompetence by this Lord Mayor and the LNP. There is no one else to blame other than themselves. And there are a few things that I want to put on the record that I observed out of, out of the budget papers. And I'm, I'm in the wrap-up for the last year, the annual operational plan, if anybody wants to follow along. There's a number of things in here, you know, that I think the residents of Brisbane should be aware of. Sorry, I just need to put my glasses back on. Transport for Brisbane, let's start there. And you would think, you would think that delivering on flood recovery... And you would think, you would think that delivering on flood recovery for the city would be a priority, and you would actually go about delivering on the repairs that the city needs after a major crisis. I mean, the Lord Mayor stood up and said, you know, "Oh, I've got all this money to spend on the floods and we're going to build the city back better." Well, no, he hasn't. And in the annual operational plan, it's very clear for everyone to see that he's not done that. Failed to provide expenditure, public transport, ferry services, can't even deliver on his metro strategy. Like, the metro, lower-than-anticipated expenditure for the Brisbane Metro. This is his signature project, his signature project. I mean, the LNP have been at this for I don't know how long now. First of all, there was the tunnel, I can't remember what that one was called, but the tunnel where the Victoria Bridge is, that didn't go ahead. Then there was the Crazy Bat Tunnel, and now they've gone alone with their dodgy metro. And the Lord Mayor's signature project, it's blown out from about $944 million in total cost when he announced it, to approximately $2.1 billion in total cost. But guess what? Even though he's more than doubled the budget to deliver the project, he can't even do it on time. He can't actually deliver on the basic things that he said he was going to. Now, I understand there's been some problems, I understand. There was a major break-in and a theft at one of the sites. I understand that the Italian tiles that they ordered from overseas took six months to be replaced. So this Lord Mayor's got a lot to answer for when even his own projects cannot be properly delivered. Bike ways, ferries, footpaths, they're all the same. However, he is very, very proud that he's launched the Kindy Active Travel Pilot Programme. Good work, Lord Mayor. So is everybody in the city. Let's have a look at the next one. Lower-than-anticipated, oh, look, we can't even get the Bridgerts and Colberts built, we can't get the retaining walls built. We're just struggling to do basic repairs to the city post the floods. And they're things you can see out my way. I mean, they have not even started on repairing Cactoblastus Corner. It's not, what are we, more than 18 months now since the flood? And let me say it again, they've not even started repairing Cactoblastus Corner. It's just appalling that the Lord Mayor can't deliver on basics like that. What else have we got in here? Oh, here's one. So the Lord Mayor is getting money in, though. He's getting higher-than-anticipated revenues in regarding Norman Creek, higher-than-anticipated revenues for Roma Street and South Bank, higher-than-anticipated grants and subsidies for sports parks in Brisbane. Now, guess what? That'll be money coming in from the state government, the federal government, and developers. And is this Lord Mayor actually investing it in delivering in the projects that he announces in the budget? No, he is not. He continues to fail to deliver on even the most basic promises for the delivery of projects. And to give a great example in here, even though he's getting, let me say it again, he's getting more money in from the state and federal government and from developers, he cannot deliver sports parks and recreational upgrades. And here's a great example in my ward. The Walter Thompson Park remediation, announced last year, nothing done. Rolled over to this year. I suspect I will never see it happen. I don't think this Lord Mayor is actually capable of announcing a project and then delivering it. It's just, I don't know, I just don't believe it's actually going to happen. I mean, the council had actually done a lot of the detailed design and documentation about six years ago when the park was first shut down, no, eight years ago now. This is a sports field in my ward in Chelma that was shut down eight years ago as being unsafe to play sport on because it undulates because of the poor remediation of the old tip site. So this is a junior sporting field that cannot be used, and it is very unsafe. And what's this administration done to fix it? Announced something last year, didn't deliver it, they've re-announced it this year, let's see. Because I reckon I'll be back here in another six or eight months saying the Lord Mayor couldn't do it then either. This is their track record, announce a project and then not deliver it. Next one. Okay, what else am I going to raise? Oh, we know what, they have progressed, though, I mean, future Brisbane now. The suburban renewal precincts programme, so, yeah, 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 it's all right. The developers are getting a nice little push-along, aren't they? Who'd be helping them, do we think, with that? Is that the Better Suburbs Initiative Board? Are they providing assistance and advice to the Lord Mayor about the suburban renewal precinct? I think they might be.
Point of order, Mr Chair.
Point of order, Deputy Mayor.
That tone of voice is clearly imputing motive, and I ask councillor Johnson to cease.
Councillor Johnson, councillors please. Councillor Johnson, please watch the tone of your language and the insinuation that came along with it. You've got the call, councillor Johnson.
Just to be clear, I don't like councillor Owen's tone when she speaks down to us and pretends she's the only person who knows about finance in this city.
It was the-
And if councillor-
Councillor Johnson, it was the imputing motive that came along with it. It's very similar to the same tone that was used last week to describe another councillor's anatomy.
Just what?
Can you please, can you please go back to the report? Thank you.
Look, this is offensive. I didn't impute motive. I didn't say anything about anybody's body parts, and it is offensive that you are saying that I did.
Councillor Johnson, councillor Johnson.
What are you talking about?
I'm talking about the comments you made in the last week's meeting where the tone was bad. Can you please go back to your report?
I don't like your tone either when you imply I'm doing things that I'm not, so let's, this is outrageous.
Thank you.
I understand the deputy mayor's got to get up and she does this, this is what they've done for a long time. You want to make the suburban renewal precincts project is lock, stop, and smoking barrels with the Better Suburbs Initiative Board.
Councillor Johnson, your time has expired. Are there further speakers? Councillor Murphy.
Boy, oh boy, Chair, I rise to contribute to the debate on the budget review. And can I just start by congratulating councillor Owen on a tremendous contribution in that debate? And in fact, I think she brought a lot of clear-headedness, sanity to the debate. I really, I did try to follow councillor Cassidy's debating of the budget, but I genuinely couldn't follow what point he was trying to make. Because some points he was saying there was a massive blowout, other points he was saying we had underspent in transport, like, but then he was on about the bridges and the metro. So I would challenge anyone to go and read the transcript of what councillor Cassidy said about the budget review and come up with a simple conclusion about what he was trying to say. You know, let alone someone with an accounting background who I think was more confused by what he was saying rather than less. But councillor Owen has assured me that in a bipartisan manner, she is willing to offer night classes for councillors who are interested to learn a little bit more about corporate finance and accounting, who want to brush up on some of the skills that, as the Lord Mayor mentioned, are taught at the AICD course, for those who haven't done it. This is not something that councillor Owen has ever offered here before, it is a one-time offer. So any councillors who want to take her up on that at morning, afternoon tea break, they can just get in touch with her and she'd be more than happy to arrange a time for everyone to join in and do that. I just want to address one of the first things that councillor Cassidy said in his debate today. He said that 12 months ago, I had said that the Breakfast Creek Green Bridge would be completed, delivered by now. And he used some selective quoting, as he often does in this place, to try to pretend that that's what I had told the media. But actually, I went back and, because you always have to do this, Chair, you always have to go back and look. So councillor Cassidy said, "Oh, 12 months ago you said this." So I went back and had a look at what I said 12 months ago. Do you know what I said 12 months ago? Do you think I said the bridge would be complete? No, I said marine works would be complete. And guess what? Marine works just completed, it's been 12 months and marine works have just completed. So there you go, you know? Once again, he will always tell you part of the truth so that it sounds convincing. But councillor Cassidy has a wonderful way with words in this place.
Point of order councillor Johnston.
Yes, I think councillor Murphy's tone in mocking councillor, hey, councillor Murphy's tone in mocking councillor Cassidy is inappropriate, Mr Chairman. It's imputing motive, and I think that you should ask that it be withdrawn.
Don't uphold your point of order councillor Johnson. Councillor Murphy, you've got the call.
Well, thank you, Chair. I noticed that no one, no one on councillor Cassidy's team has got up, raised an issue with this, but councillor Johnson has.
Just one moment councillor Murphy. Councillor Johnston, your point of order.
Is it all women's tone that you don't like, Mr Chair, or just mine?
That is, again, inappropriate and do not uphold your point of order. Councillor Murphy, you've got the call.
Chair, he also has claimed that the Green Bridge, the Green Bridge is in particular, Breakfast Creek Green Bridge is over budget. And we know, our transport committee members who were present this morning heard him inquire to the officers about the big blowout in the Breakfast Creek Green Bridge programme cost. And what did the officers tell him, straight to his face? Actually, no councillor Cassidy, there has been no blowout. We've had extremely difficult cost pressures on the project, but we've worked through those pressures and the Breakfast Creek Green Bridge remains within the original budget estimate, to which he was like, "Oh, okay, right." So, you know, what I said was consistent with what the officers said. And I think that surprised him that there wasn't some sort of grand conspiracy theory to defraud the council, which, you know, seems to be often what he is getting at when it comes to this. And, you know, councillor Owen made the point before that, you know, when you have a go at the movements of cash and the cash flows and the ins and outs that come through in these budget reviews, that, oh, you know, that they're not criticizing the officers, they're criticizing the Lord Mayor. Well, you know, through you, Chair, to councillor Cassidy, does councillor Cassidy genuinely believe that it's the Lord Mayor sitting there like the puppeteer, directing all the cash flows and managing all the ins and outs of these projects? Or setting strategic directions and the accounting then flows downstream from that? Well, of course, we set the strategic directions of the council here in this place, that's what the council does. And the professional accountants and finance officers and through the CFO on down actually manage those inflows and outflows of cash. That's what happens in every council in the state. And once again, to the Lord Mayor's point, I think it would behoove councillor Cassidy very well to do that introductory course to corporate finance that is offered by the Department of Local Government that is through the company directors' course, because it would help, it would help them come up with a cogent debate when it comes to corporate finance. Now, we know on a range of programmes and projects, we have, and we've admitted in this place, we've suffered significant cost impacts. We know, for example, the Kangaroo Point Green Bridge in particular represents significant engineering and construction challenges. Since our construction partners tended for that work and the projects commenced, construction and number of internal factors have resulted in increased construction costs. Additionally, during the February 2022 floods, which, you know, some councils seem to have had collective amnesia about, we paused works on a whole range of major council projects in order to focus on flood recovery. But that did still mean that we incurred costs on those projects, holding costs, pausing costs. Remembering, we even closed the Kangaroo Point Green Bridge site for over a month to move piling work and barges to help the state government recover the Drift Restaurant that they had let rot for so many years. And so that flood recovery work was very important. Council has warned costs that were not reimbursed by the state government for that. And we had significant delays as a result, the pass on to the project. That, in concert with the rising cost of material, the inflation crisis has meant that we have seen the bridge construction price for Kangaroo Point increase significantly. And we know that there will be cost implications for that, which we will be quantifying and bringing back to this chamber soon. Because unlike downtown at George Street where we have significant cost increases and pressures, we don't cover them up, we don't direct officers to cover them up. We bring them to this chamber and we air them out in front of everyone to see, in the hand side, on the video link. No, absolutely, I fundamentally reject that councillor Johnson. And if you, and if you think, if you think that there's something that needs to be done, then you know where to take that in terms of that allegation. But this is the most open and transparent council in the country. We publish more about what we are doing and we have a, I won't say a professional opposition chair, but we have an aspiring professional opposition that is trying to hold us to account. And they generally do a pretty good job. But when they get into corporate finance documents like they have today with such a level of inexperience and such a political axe to grind, I find that they make mistakes and it embarrasses them, Chair. In terms of, councillor Cassidy also mentioned Brisbane Metro, he mentioned Brisbane Metro a lot. And we know that Brisbane Metro has also suffered from the unprecedented cost escalations that have happened in the market, in line with impacts reported throughout industry councils experiencing increased costs and other challenges such as significant lead times adding to the complexity of delivering, you know, what I've said previously in this place is the most complex project that this council has ever delivered, both in terms of, you know, new vehicles, like 10 work sites across the city, new charging infrastructure, a project of this type that's never been attempted in Australia before. And we have had significant pressures, like, for example, the cost of construction materials being up by 24% in the last 12 months and the ongoing pressure around demand for plant and material. We know labour demand is projected to grow by 42,000 this year to a peak of 44,000. So so much demand for labour and so many projects on the hop in Brisbane at the moment. You know, of course, we are facing cost pressures from that, and so are many other projects. And I'll reflect on that in just a second. But we hear this gargantuan lie from those opposite about the cost of Brisbane Metro. And it just seems to keep getting bigger to them every time they talk about it. It was, I think, 1.9 billion, they talked about that, which was a made-up figure. Now they're saying 2.1, and I just heard we've finally cracked the 2.2 billion dollar mark on this project. So the misleading around the cost of Brisbane Metro just continues to get bigger and bigger all the time. So I want to really just set the record straight today, for all concerned. So the cost escalations on Brisbane Metro has meant that the cost of Brisbane Metro has gone from 1.244 billion to 1.4 billion dollars, a cost increase of $150 million. That is extraordinarily low, given some of the impacts that we have faced. And all of this does not include the Gabba Metro Station, which is a $450 million project being delivered by the state, that is the Gabba Busway Station. That is not this council's project and it's not this council's job to deliver it. We are, of course, a funding contributor to that Gabba Busway Station, but it is not part of our project. And so if you look at the actual costs, those are the costs, 1.244 to 1.4 billion dollars. And you will not hear an apology from those on the other side about lying to people about those costs. You will not.
Councillor Murphy, your time has expired. Just one moment before we go on. Councillor Johnson, the piece of glass that was broken over there, has it all been picked up? All right, thank you. Just be aware that there is, yep, thank you. Councillor Hutton.
Mr Chair, I move that council now adjourn for afternoon tea for a period of 15 minutes, which commences only when all councillors have vacated the chambers and the doors have been locked.
Second. We have a motion for adjournment for 15 minutes for afternoon tea, passed by councillor Hutton, seconded by councillor Mackay. All those in favour say aye. Those against say no. The ayes have it. Thank you, councillors. Councillors, are there any further speakers on E and C? Councillor Cunningham.
Thanks, Mr Chair. I rise to speak on item A. And, Mr Chair, let me join with my colleagues councillor Owen and councillor Murphy in mentioning some of the ridiculous claims made by the leader of the opposition. The numbers that were thrown around by councillor Cassidy, and more importantly, his interpretation of them, shows very clearly, Mr Chair, why the residents of Brisbane should be very concerned about the future of our city under a green Labour coalition of chaos. They should be very concerned, Mr Chair. The papers being voted on today actually show a $54 million increase in capital and operating expenses. That's on page two of the report in the statement of income and expenditure. Not an $85 million decrease, a $54 million increase. The vast majority of this is for the delivery of the state and federal government-funded voluntary home buyback scheme. This is something that we receive revenue for and which has been brought into the 2324 budget in this review. The figure referred to by the opposition is not from the part of the budget that actually determines and gives the legal authority for the expenditure of council funds. Rather, Mr Chair, he pulled them from the cash flow statement. Mr Chair, as you might have noticed, it's 2023, the world has moved on from cash accounting. As the Lord Mayor has said, the reason- As the Lord Mayor has said, the reason for the decrease in projected cash payments for materials and services this financial year is because council actually has already made those payments last financial year. We made the payments early, that's ahead of schedule, on a range of projects right across council. Over 15 million dollars, for example, was paid ahead of schedule for the Mogul Road Corridor upgrade, 4 million dollars for the Green Bridges project, 4.2 million for the asphalt and aggregates purchases, and 3.1 for road resurfacing. We hear claims from those opposite every week, Mr Chair, about the labour economics and finances. I'm not sure what school that they went to, but this is an absolute new low when it comes to their sheer incompetence. They are not a serious opposition, Mr Chair. And the residents of Brisbane should have serious concerns about the future of the city if they were elected next year. As the Lord Mayor has noted, there are minimal movements in the submission. Our operating capability surplus has increased by 39.1 million dollars in this review. Revenue will also increase by 38.3 million this year. There is an overall net decrease in operating expenses of just 0.8 million, largely due to corporate overhead adjustments which are required. Our capital spend is projected to increase by 55.3 million in this review, again prominently due to transfers from 2223 to future years for the home buyback scheme and suburban enhancement fund projects. So hopefully, Mr Chair, that might also include some footpath projects commissioned by labour councillors, but I doubt it will. Borrowings remain at published levels with no change in the end of year forecast. Mr Chair, importantly, the budget isn't finalised on the morning of the budget. We know that councillor Cassidy sent a budget submission to the Lord Mayor on the morning of the budget. Maybe he thinks that's how it works. But councillor Cassidy has been caught out today, he has been caught out for his ineptitude and instead of, you know, trying to dig his way out, he just kept digging and digging and digging. And he returned to some of his greatest hits. All I can say through you, Mr Chair, is that the leader of the opposition should know when to stop digging. Mr Chair, briefly on item B, the annual operation plan progress and quarterly financial report reflects council's financial results for the year ended 30 June 2023. The quarterly financial report shows the approved budget as at 3BR against the full 2324 financial year results, while the annual operational plan and progress report provides information on the achievements and progress that has been made by our council officers in the last year. The Statement of Comprehensive Income outlines the final results compared to 3BR and the previous year. We can see a number of increased costs this financial year, including nearly 75 million in materials and services costs and fuel, Mr Chair, has been a major contributor to that. Our employee costs also increased by roughly 20 million dollars, which should be no surprise to all councillors in this chamber, given the administrative pay increase that was put forward for December. While finance costs increased with rising interest rates, this was offset by increased interest revenue. The report also details our major infrastructure investment last year. As the Lord Mayor said, 1.3 billion dollars worth of infrastructure investment in Brisbane. This is an incredible achievement and I commend this report to the chamber.
Thank you councillors, further speakers, councillor Strunk.
Thank you Chair, listen, I rise to speak on items A and B, as a collective I suppose. And I just want to talk a little bit about some of the contributions that have been made on the other side. And I think I'll start off with councillor Murphy in regards to this, this project, this project called Metro. And the unbelievable amount of time it's taken to deliver this project. My goodness, it was, I came into this council in 2016 and it was being promised by Lord Mayor Graham Quirk. And I wouldn't have thought that almost three or almost two terms later, we're still, it still hasn't been delivered. It's hugely over budget. And I don't think councillor Murphy said what the actual amount is actually going to cost by the time it is delivered in 2025 fully, if it is delivered by 2025 fully, after the next election. So that'll be like three elections, three promises, the same promise for three, for three, for three sessions. So that's, that's.
Councillors, councillor Strunk, you've got the call.
Thank you. Listen, we're responsible for what council's responsible for.
Point of order Chair. Just one moment councillor Strunk, point of order councillor.
Will councillor Strunk take a question?
No.
No, I'm sorry councillor, I'm sorry councillor Murphy, councillor Strunk would not take a question. Councillor Strunk, you've got the call.
We're responsible for what we promise. State governments plural are responsible for what they promise, right? And to equate one for another is, is just, is hiding from the truth. And the truth is that this council, multiple Lord Mayors, right, have not been able to deliver a project for this city. And what's happened to the patronage on buses over the last seven or eight years is disgusting. It's really unbelievably bad. I think I was, I think recently, I was talking to one of my colleagues and they said it had actually decreased by 20 million trips in 10 years. Now, if you call that good transport, good public transport, delivering for this city, I think, I think the majority of the 1.2 million people in this city would not agree, would not agree. Now, also want to talk about the contribution with, that Angela councillor Owen contributed to this chamber with a lecture in regards to accounting standards and purposes and goals and all that. Well, honestly, your side of this chamber obviously doesn't appreciate the skills that you have. You've never been the finance chair for any Lord Mayor and I wonder why. And I wonder why, and I'm just, I'm not going to speculate why, I just say I wonder why.
Point of order Chair.
Point of order councillor.
Oh, I think that's a very personal attack on a female councillor and I think that's not very kind. Can you ask that councillor Strunk, please come back to the report at hand?
Will do, councillor Strunk, I'm assuming you're talking in general and not directing your comments towards a single councillor?
I'm, I'm, correct.
Thank you.
Insofar as.
Councillor Strunk, can you come back to your speech please?
Excuse me, I am talking about the contribution.
Councillor Strunk, I will remind you, as I have reminded other people in this chamber, you do not talk while I'm talking. You do not do it, I give you the call.
Right, so I'm talking about the contribution that councillor Owen made and I'm not speculating as to the reasons why she hasn't been given the finance chair. I'm just saying that I'm surprised that that side of the chamber, the LNP, hasn't given a person who has multiple degrees in this area.
Point of, Mr Chair.
And recognised her abilities.
Just one moment councillor Strunk, point of order deputy mayor.
Councillor Owen is not in the report and I feel that councillor Strunk is getting very close to imputing motives.
Thank you, thank you deputy mayor, councillor Strunk, please consider your comments, you've got the call.
Point of order, Mr Chair.
Point of order councillor Johnson.
Councillor Murphy, the Lord Mayor, councillor Owen, they have attacked other councillors by name in all of their speeches, all of them today. Are you making a ruling now that an opposition councillor cannot mention the name of an LNP councillor? Is that what you're suggesting?
Councillor Johnson, first of all, I don't uphold your point of order because I did not actually give councillor Strunk a direction. I asked him to consider his comments. Councillor Strunk, you've got the call.
Thank you Chair, so just finish off by saying that we on this side of the chamber, right, take very seriously the budget and the cost blowouts and overruns that have been happening for years. Not just this year, this budget, but for many, many budgets. And consequently, I think the people of Brisbane have the right to hear the truth in regards to the blowouts, the huge blowouts, especially on Metro, right? And the Green Bridges, Kingswood Smith Drive, I mean, it just goes on, Tuong Radabout, it just keeps going on and on and on, right? And it's just amazing that they can justify all this with spin. And they think anyone who talks, talks about this shouldn't be, they should just fall in line with their thinking, with their ways of doing the accountancy and, and, and actually explaining it, right? And I just think it's, I just think it's really sad that, that the rapiers of this city have to tolerate the incompetence of this LNP administration, thank you Chair.
Thank you councillor, any further speakers? Councillor Hammond.
Thank you, Mr Chair, I just want to raise a couple of points that councillor Strunk said, that he went on about bus patronage like it's.
Point of order councillor Johnson.
Yes, which items is councillor Hammond talking about?
Thank you.
Sorry, I'm speaking in support.
I do believe that councillor, councillor Hammond actually said what she was speaking about. Councillor Hammond, you've got the, you've got the call.
Just going, just want to correct the record of what councillor Strunk said. Went on about bus patronage, like that's fully our responsibility in council. What about the state government's involvement in that? Because they're the ones that actually do the fairing and the routing. So they're, I think they've got a pretty much a bit to say about bus patronage as well. I liked how councillor Strunk kept on going on about the blowouts. Well, and that state governments are responsible for what they announce, like councils are responsible for the blowouts. But he failed to say the blowouts that have happened under the state government. So I just want to, as he said, the people of Brisbane need to know, they need to know, so.
Point of order Chair.
Point of order councillor Whitman.
I'm probably going to just mention relevance before the councillor starts talking about a budget that has nothing to do with council.
Thank you, I do believe that councillor Strunk brought this into the budget debate.
He did and he talked, he talked about blowouts and everything else and he also talked about that people of Brisbane need to know the truth. So, they're saying that, you know, the Metro, which is in the report, was announced under Graham Quirk, the previous Lord Mayor, and that's true. But what else was announced, 2019, there was announcement of 53 million dollars for the Northern Busway, which is a 2.5 kilometre of road. By 2021, that went up to 72 million. And 2023, it's now 172 million dollars for, for 250 metres of road. So that's 150% increase by my books. But then we go on to the rail blowout, that's blown out by about 7 billion dollars, I think, that think was trying to have hidden that no one directed anybody to hired reports. And let's not talk about Cross River Rail. Cross River Rail has been talked about for three elections by the state government. So I just want to say, how do you spell hypocrisy? Thank you councillor Owen, on the other side, we do a responsible budget.
Just one moment councillor Owen, please do not call out across the chamber. Councillor Hammond, you've got the call.
On this side of the chamber, we, we are financially responsible. We are delivering more and more for this city that those opposite have never been able to achieve. They go against everything. When we're trying to improve for our suburbs, what do they do? They either stand behind the stalls or they vote against it. So this, this debate that has happened from that side of the chamber just shows the people of Brisbane that a red, green coalition will be very, very dangerous for our city of Brisbane. I stand and commend the report.
Thank you councillor Hammond, any further speakers? See no one rising, Lord Mayor is not here, no right of reply. We will now put the report, all those in favour say aye. Those against say no. The ayes have it.
Division.
Division.
Division called by councillor Cassidy and councillor Collier, ayes to my right and noes to my left. Please ring the bells. Clerks, please read the results, councillors silence while the results are being read please.
Mr Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being 17 in favour and 7 against.
Thank you, the report has passed, the motion has passed, councillors, please return to your seats. Deputy Mayor, Economic Development and Brisbane 2032 and Paralympic Games Committee report please.
Thank you, Mr Chair, I move that the report of the Economic Development and the Brisbane 2032 Olympic and Paralympic Games Committee meeting held on Tuesday, 15th of August, 2023, be adopted.
Seconded. Thank you, it has been moved by the deputy mayor and seconded by councillor Hutton that the report of the Economic Development and Brisbane 32 Olympic and Paralympic Games Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the 15th of August, 2023, be adopted. Deputy Mayor, you've got the call.
Thank you, Mr Chair, before I get to the report that is on tourism and accessibility, I just want to say congratulations to the RNA for the Royal Queensland Show last week, which saw absolute bumper numbers across the week of spectacular, very much Indian summer weather for an ECHA. But it was great to see the people of Brisbane, Queensland and probably interstate as well and those that may have travelled for FIFA, to be here and enjoy the fantastic 10 days that is the city meeting the country. I have to say Brendan, the CEO of RNA and Justice Thomas did an absolutely amazing job to put on one of the best shows that we've seen in many, many years, over 208,000 Dagwood Dogs, I did contribute to that. Over 150,000 Strawberry Sundays, I also contributed to that. But the big ones, 3,500 jobs created, 550 exhibitor stands, three tonnes of fireworks used each night and over 3,000 corsages made for those that would have visited the council stand as well. And that is just a couple of the ECHA numbers this year. It's fantastic, over 400,000, haven't seen numbers like that for decades. And I thank the people of, as I said, Brisbane, Queensland, interstate or overseas for supporting those from the country that have done it tough over the last couple of years. An absolutely fantastic outcome for Brisbane and for people that are out spending in Brisbane as well. In the Business Hub, again, we've got our yearly numbers that have come in which are absolutely fantastic. It's all about the stats at the moment. So before I go on to what's on this week, I have to go through the outstanding numbers that we saw for the 2223 year, which were an enormous increase, over 270% increase on our opening year. Coworking drop-ins last year, 6,371, 180 mentor sessions and on average about 34 attendees for events, depending on the days and what the events were. So absolutely amazing work done by the team over there on the Business Hub and it continues for the next week. Don't, don't forget to have a look and share it on your socials please. Getting Business Clarity is on tomorrow from 9.30. Aim towards startups to establish medium sized businesses who do with a little help defining or redefining their message through Facult3. Surviving and Thriving on the 29th at 11 o'clock for not for profits who need to think and approach a culture of philanthropy differently. And that's being done by Peoples Plus Science. And then on the 29th at 4 o'clock, you can do your rooftop yoga, one hour yoga class, including breathing techniques, physical movements and resting poses to help you relax at the end of your day. So a lot of variety there and what's happening in the Business Hub. Please make sure you share with your business community so that they can drop into and experience the wonderful opportunities that they have in the hub. Last week, Beta presented too around the fantastic accessible tourism programmes that they are running and how they are contributing, working towards getting our tourism operators and those that are in the hospitality industry ready for some of these large events, not just the Olympics, but we've got World Cups coming up over the next couple of years and I'm sure there'll be more that's even on the agenda at the moment. and I'm sure there'll be more that's even on the agenda at the moment. So currently, there are three growth pillars to support and accelerate the visitation economy. Welcome and host engagement, which is around the guest experience, and the new programme called Brisbane Welcomes You, which was a pilot with the FIFA, where we got over 1,000 volunteers becoming volunteers to welcome everybody to Brisbane during those events. The Brisbane Hotel Concierge Programme and the Beta Volunteer Training. And then there's Sustainability Pillar, which is around eco-certified sustainable tourism destination programmes and Sustainable Tourism Certification Programme Champions. And then there is the First Nations Pillar, where we, for the second year, have done our tourism relationship building programmes with our First Nations operators. And the first for this year is the Tourism Council's Cultural Protocols Training and Cultural Immersion Programme. So it's fantastic to see on these pathways, more than 96 businesses supported, 46 businesses are part of the temp programmes, and 29 businesses really getting into the trade-ready level of these pillars as well. So we will continue to deliver those programmes across those three pillars to make sure that our hospitality and our tourism offers are absolutely ready for the visitor economy, which is just growing year on year. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Are there any further speakers? Being no one, we will now put the report. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against say no. The ayes have it. Councillor Murphy, Transport Committee, please.
I move that the report of the Transport Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the 15th of August, 2023 be adopted.
Seconded.
It has been moved by councillor Murphy and seconded by councillor Owen that the report of the Transport Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the 15th of August, 2023, be adopted. Councillor Murphy, you have the call.
Thank you, Chair. Can I ask that Item A and B be taken in seriatum for voting purposes, therefore Item C is taken separately as well? So A and B together and C separately.
So A and B together and C separately, noted, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Last week's Transport Committee presentation was a general update on council's e-mobility scheme. Chair, one of the most significant changes to transport in Brisbane in the last four years has been the exponential growth of e-mobility, particularly since the introduction of e-scooters to Brisbane in 2018 under this Lord Mayor. This year in February, our scheme hit 10 million trips, and in the last six months, we've been able to add a further 1.5 million to that total. Our city's attachment to e-mobility is reflected with our average trips taken per month tripling from 100,000 in 2018 to just over 317,000 per month in 2023. And this is just from 3,900 devices across Brisbane, so those devices are getting a lot of use. I'm happy to say that based off the success of the scheme thus far, council has extended its e-mobility operating agreements from July 2023 through to July 2024. Over this time, operators will introduce new e-scooters, like the 200-seated e-scooters from Beam, not sure if councillors are seeing them appearing around the city, they've been a real hit, very popular, the e-scooters with the seat on them, and they're getting a lot more use than the ones without a seat. And also Neuron have introduced their new N4 e-scooter, which features a range of rideability, usability and safety improvements over the previous generation. Council is now in a very unique position in order to address emerging modes of transportation and e-mobility first, while fostering ongoing adaptation and evaluation of e-mobility's applications across a range of different transport-related tasks. Part of our adaptation to e-mobility saw council introduce a trial restriction on devices in both the CBD and Fortitude Valley Safe Night Precincts between midnight and 5am on Friday and Saturday nights. These restrictions, as councillors may recall, involve locking the shared e-scooters from our operators during those hours, as well as limiting the speed limit in the surrounding CBD and Fortitude Valley areas. Another part of our innovation around e-mobility can be seen in our first mile-last mile trials, in which we work with operators to incentivise residents and visitors who use e-mobility to catch public transport and use other parts of the offering that we have in the city's public and active transport realm. This first mile-last mile trial has seen over 50,000 trips taken to dedicated parking zones at busway stations, and we've seen more than 42,000 trips by users to dedicated parking zones at ferry terminals in Belimba and Hawthorn. This number continues to grow, Mr. Chair, with the operators now introducing incentivised fares in partnership with council on the 1st of August, 2023, and so far, we've seen a 10% increase in trips taken in those areas where we've reduced the fees to ride. Another highlight has been our work with Queensland Police Service Stadiums, Queensland, and the operators to develop plans to operate during special events at the Gabba and Suncorp Stadium. This is some of the quiet work that's done by the e-mobility team, but I want to really make sure that councillors know about the impact that this quiet work is having. So during special events at Suncorp Stadium this year, almost 400,000 trips have been taken so far on e-scooters, on our highest scheme e-scooters, I should say. And I take great delight in sharing with you that during the Morones 326 win over New South Wales, our scheme had just over 12,000 trips arriving to or leaving from the stadium, which represents 23% of the game's total attendance numbers. So 23% of the people who travelled to or from that game arrived by council's e-mobility scheme. So anyone who says e-mobility isn't having a massive impact on the way people move around this city, you have to laugh them out the door, Chair, because e-mobility is making an impact, it is getting cars off the road, it is connecting people in that first mile and last mile. And increasingly, we're seeing through research from some of our partnerships with UQ and Griffith, it's visitors to our city that really love to take up e-mobility even more so than the residents themselves. So, and it's one of the reasons, if you have a look at some of the reviews in Brisbane on the hotels, hotel websites, you will see people say, oh, we love the scooters around Brisbane, it was so close to our hotel, we were able to just jump on and get around the city using them. So they really are making a point of difference when it comes to the tourism offering in our city. Importantly, though, it isn't just tourists that love the scheme, it is being picked up in the suburbs as well, we've had over 146,000 trips taken across Sandgate, Shauncliffe, Brighton and Winham and Manly, where we took the scooters out to the suburbs. The suburbs have well and truly told us that they love them. These trial locations have been extended due to their success, brought about by high usage, high levels of parking compliance and plenty of positive feedback from residents. In that vein, Chair, the committee considered two petitions last week, one requesting council retain e-scooters in the Winham and Manly Ward with 189 signatures, and one petition requesting council remove e-scooters from Winham and Manly Ward with just 11 signatures. The petition to retain the scooters noted that e-scooters provide additional motor transport, fun and entertainment for visitors and residents to the area. Residents also noted that whilst improvements were needed, these can only occur where there is certainty of long-term retention in the scheme. Both petitions had the same recommendation that following the success of the trial, the e-scooters will remain operating in the Winham and Manly areas. The committee voted unanimously to support the recommendation. The local councillor, councillor Whitme, was consulted, but did not indicate whether she supported or opposed the recommendation, so I'm looking forward to see what she has to say about it in the chamber today, and I'll leave further debate to the chamber.
Thank you, councillor Wines, and thank you for reminding the chamber how good the Morones wins was as well. Councillor Cassidy?
Thanks very much, Chair. I just rise to speak on the e-mobility update. Councillor Murphy confirmed in his presentation last week that council has no plans to ensure that e-mobility fills the last mile space in terms of public and active transport in Brisbane. The presentation outlined that some work had been done by TMR, the state government, and by Griffith University. He detailed that work and how council was relying on that, and some surveys that the scooter companies, there's private companies that are there to make a profit for their companies, have done some work on that. But it's disappointing to hear that council, under councillor Murphy's leadership, has no plans around the ability to use e-mobility as a last mile option for people. So I think a lot more work needs to be done in that space. That's certainly been evident in the trial in the Belimba, Hawthorn, Norman Park area of Brisbane, one of the latest trials that's come on board in councillor Collier's ward alongside the trial that's going on in councillor Johnson's ward. There was, I suppose, an intention that they'd like to see the last mile aspect in those trial areas used a lot more than the bayside areas, because it's been confirmed over the last couple of years that almost no one is using hire e-scooters for last mile trips in the two bayside areas, therefore recreation, as councillor Murphy has said. And that's a fair point as well, that people want to use them for that, and with the changes that we have insisted on locally around making sure that they're parked appropriately and footpaths and footways are kept clear for people, and particularly people who live down the avenues, and the bottom end of the avenues in Sandgate, in those public housing areas often have mobility issues. So early on, it was a real concern, so we have worked on that and made sure that some changes have been made. But one critical piece that's still missing in all this, and I'm sure councillor Murphy will elaborate in his summing up, is where is the money going? Council is raising millions of dollars from these scooter companies. Sure, we are all accepting that they are here, and they are being used by 10 million, I think he said. Where is that money going? We know, we know that some of it went into the inner city here, from previous details that councillor Murphy has advised the chamber. So some of that money, that some of those millions of dollars that have come in from the e-scooter companies has been spent on parking areas in the inner city, but I haven't seen any wider footpaths, dedicated parking areas out in my community, or just generally increased active transport infrastructure in my community. Maybe it's, maybe this has funded the grid in the city, the separated grid and cycleways, not sure, it's never really been made clear. And if it has, that's great, where is the money going to go? The answer can't be that it's going on the Kangaroo Point and Breakfast Creek bridges, not when, not when these scooters are operating in the Winham bayside area, in the Sandgate bayside area, over in councillor Johnson's ward and now in councillor Collier's ward. We need to see an investment in making sure that these scooter schemes are sustainable in the long term, that our footpaths and bikeways remain safe for everyone to use. That's what, that's what we call for here, and I'm sure councillor Murphy has all that information, his fingertips wasn't evident in the presentation, and I'm sure he will clear that up in his summing up, because we are talking millions of dollars. When you look at the capital expenditure on new footpaths in the budget, that's at 1.6 million, I think, the safer paths to schools, so those 16, those 16 footpaths are the Lord Mayor's funded. We've seen no increase in SEF funding, in fact, the cost of delivering those projects is far outstripping what the increase that we've seen in SEF funding. So, you know, a very simple question, where is the money going? I think everyone wants to know. We have been guaranteed that that income from those hire scooter companies is going to be spent on active transport, well, we want to see where it is.
Thank you, councillor Cassidy. Further speakers? Councillor Whitme?
Thank you. I rise to enter the infrastructure debate, and the very, it's really interesting that these two petitions are taking seriatum, and the, those opposite accuse us of playing politics.
Point of order, Mr. Chair.
Point of order, councillor Owen.
The councillor opposite referenced that she was rising to speak on the infrastructure debate, this is actually the Transport Committee report, I just seek your rectification and clarification.
Thank you. Councillor Whitme, I'm assuming you are speaking to the transport report?
I am speaking to transport, my apologies.
That's okay, that's okay. And to confirm, we're taking A, B and C separately for voting now?
A, B and C, seriatum, yeah. Well, no, that were, they were already taken, seriatum?
No, no, sorry, A and B were being voted together.
Oh, voted together, okay, perfect. All right. No, look, there's obviously some confusion on where we all stand, and to be blatantly honest, I absolutely support the scooter initiative, I think it's fantastic. I also support ending the trial, because I think, like most people on this side of the aisle, are starting to think that the LMP have commitment issues and just want to continue and extend trials rather than to commit to anything. So I support both petitions, I support the petition to keep e-scooters, and I support the petition to end the trial and actually make it permanent.
Thank you. Further speakers? Councillor Massey?
Thank you, Chair. I rise to speak on the Transportation Committee report. Firstly, look, I acknowledge, I think scooters are a great part, e-scooters are a great part of the future electrified, electrified future of active transport. I myself have ridden nearly all of the e-scooters devices, and I think they are an important part of it, not only in relation to making sure that we get people out of cars to do those trips, but also clearly there's a big push now for tourism, you know, and we can see that, because there are now more e-scooters riders crossing the Victoria Bridge to Southbank and Kangaroo Point than there are cyclists, because they take the Goodwill Bridge. But, you know, in recognizing that, I think that actually puts a greater scope on the fact that this is also being carried by the active transport network, right? Where we have missing links, where we have no protectors, we have cycleways that aren't protected. And if anything, the shift to e-scooters and e-bikes, and that push not only from this commercial endeavour, but also privately with people privately owning e-scooters, should create a greater focus on those active pathway connections across the city, especially in the central parts of the city. It's, it's really critical, as I mentioned, that Victoria Bridge, there's lots of people using e-scooters. But, you know, even future bikeways in that area connect to nothing. And that's dangerous, and that's dangerous for people on bicycles, and that's dangerous for people on e-scooters. The other thing, point that I just really want to say is, with the increase of e-scooter use, you know, we have a really big challenge, especially in the Gabba Ward, with where they're parked. You know, Kangaroo Point is a particular difficult area, because we have a river walk that has different sizes as you walk across it, and some of it can be very narrow, and this becomes a trip hazard to residents across Kangaroo Point. I think the move to those facilities or endpoint and parking points is compulsory, has to be really important, because what we want is our residents across all our wards, especially where e-scooters are being used, to actually be safe and ensure that our footpaths are accessible, as can be. So I'd just speak to say a couple of those things, I hope to see more work in this area, and, you know, I really hope in the future we'll, we'll move that focus just away from just the central ward, where there was a lot of work in, and move that to the other wards where e-scooters look like they might be thriving. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Further speakers? Councillor Griffiths?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I also rise to speak on this item regarding e-scooters. I suppose I'm on the record as having concerns about e-scooters, and I believe they are reflected in what councillor Cassidy said today in terms of not enough money is going into building infrastructure for our suburbs and for our city. And I'd just like to give a picture of what I saw just recently, last couple of weeks, where I was buying a coffee at a local shop, and I saw a young man going along School Road, this is at Yoronga, on his e-scooter, and he was zooming along in front of these cars, and I suppose it's driving along, and he didn't have a helmet on. Sure, didn't have a helmet on. What concerned me most was the baby that was strapped to his back. That concerned me the most. And what I'm seeing with e-scooters more and more, and what I'm hearing in my ward, is more and more complaints from residents about their safety on footpaths, about their own safety, and it'd be elderly residents, and it would be my mother sometimes, will go, how safe is that to have a scooter zoom up behind you? It just takes a step to the side or someone miscalculating, and you're hit and you're over, and you're, sometimes, yeah. So I think we haven't really thought this out, we aren't seeing the spend in infrastructure that I think we as a city need to do, and yet I understand the inner city has the majority of footpaths built, and I understand the inner city's got pedestrians and, and got a lot of tourists, but for the rest of the city, we haven't. And certainly my parts of the city that I represent, I've got 100 footpaths waiting to be built, over 100, over 100 footpaths waiting to be built. And then, and I'm wanting them to be built for people to walk on and people to use their wheelchairs, and if I get another complaint about people wanting to use prams on a footpath but they can't because we can't afford to build them, I just think that's not on. And... And learning today that more revenue is coming into this council and not going to be put on footpaths is just absurd. So that's what I don't support about the proposal, is the fact that we aren't building the infrastructure to go with the, with the need that is being created here. Thank you.
Thank you councillor. Are there any further speakers? I see no one rising. Councillor Murphy, write a reply.
Thank you Chair. Just briefly, and I want to thank all councillors for their contribution on this debate. And I, you know, I accept and, and understand that, that some opposition councillors do have genuine concerns about e-mobility and about the scheme, so. But there have been some things raised in this debate that are incorrect or are spurious. And we should just start with councillor Cassidy. And he has asked, I think quite fairly, where the money from the scheme goes, you know, the revenue, what is it used on? And my simple answer to that is the revenue from this scheme funds council's biggest ever build of public and active transport in the history of this city. So, you know, we are spending more this year and every year going forward on public and active transport than we ever have before. So yes, we are raising a, a small bit of additional revenue out of the e-mobility scheme. But that is nowhere near our expenditure on public and active transport, which as we've seen through the budget process and at the budget information sessions, is growing outsized. And in fact, our spend on public transport alone over the forward estimates doubles. Goes from 99 million to just under $200 million once Metro is operationalized in 2024. So a very significant investment that this council is making in active transport. And people will see it, people will be able to walk on it as we open the Breakfast Creek Green Bridge early next year and the Kangaroo Point Green Bridge shortly thereafter. And it was interesting to hear in councillor Cassidy's debate that now he's sort of asking, you know, that we're not doing enough on first mile, last mile. And I thought that was interesting because I've mentioned the first mile, last mile trial in this place on a number of occasions. And councillor Cassidy hasn't particularly been interested in it. But now apparently we're not doing enough, not moving fast enough. So he has skipped over the part where he has been quite hard to pin down for a number of years on whether he actually supports e-mobility in this city. And I think when the residents of his ward showed that they did in fact support the e-scooters out there, he has had a road to Damascus conversion on it and that, that's fine. But Labour have never had, Labour have never come to this place with a consolidated policy position across all of their councillors when it comes to e-mobility. And I think, I think you see that today Chair, because councillor Whitmy also said that we didn't, we had commitment issues. We had commitment issues on e-mobility. The people who championed the trial of them here in this city in 2018, first city in Australia to have them here. The, the team that has the first and only e-mobility plan in the country. The team that has, you know, had repeated increases in the number, the size and scope of the higher scheme. And the team that has never once reduced the numbers of e-scooters in this city. Apparently we are the ones who have commitment issues. I thought that was interesting from a councillor who wouldn't give a recommendation on whether she supported or opposed whether we keep e-scooters in her ward. So I thought that was an interesting comment to make around commitment issues. But if she had perhaps read the recommendation, she would have found in the recommendation, the recommendation that was being made was to end the trial and make it permanent. So I, I don't know, I don't know if she fully read the response, but that was in the response that she did not make a recommendation on. So I will hope, and I'm glad councillor Whitmy, that you've made public now your commitment to e-mobility in your ward. Because certainly councillor Cumming was sceptical to begin with, but came, came full circle on e-mobility. And even, even to the point where he was putting lovely photos of himself riding e-scooters on social media, which I think we all appreciated in this chamber. Councillor Massey, you asked a question around parking, well, I think made some comments generally around the missing links. And I've said repeatedly in this chamber that, you know, we know that this is a city built for cars. We're retrofitting it for other modes. That's difficult. It will take time and significant expense. So there are missing links all around the city that we are endeavouring to fix. In terms of where the revenue from this scheme will go, well, I can tell you councillor Massey, $400,000 we'll spend this financial year on parking zones. $400,000 this year we'll spend on parking zones in the CBD and in your ward. So we understand that parking issues are affecting everyone and we are working with the operators to roll out solutions, parking solutions to those zones. Councillor Griffiths illustrated that he still, unlike some of his colleagues, has concerns about the safety and efficacy of e-scooters. And he mentioned the speed of some of the scooters, I think, travelling on School Road. Is that in Yaronga councillor Griffiths? Yes, so that will be outside the scheme area. That wouldn't be a scheme scooter. That would be a private e-scooter. And the Lord Mayor, myself, other councillors in this place have raised issues about the speeds, the speeds of the private e-scooters that are out there. Some of them are capable of top speeds of over 100 kilometres an hour when, when the governing is taken off on those scooters. So we've also shared our concerns around them. If it was a higher scooter councillor Griffiths, then I'm happy to take that up with the operators and look into that for you. So we will, we're happy to leave the debate there Chair and recommend the reports to the chamber.
Thank you councillor Murphy. And can I remind you to direct your comment to other councillors through the chair? Well now put item A of the report. All those in favour say aye. Those against say no. The ayes have it. Item B of the report. All those in favour say aye. Those against say no. The ayes have it. And item C of the report. All those in favour say aye. Those against say no. The ayes have it as well. Councillor Wines, Infrastructure Committee report please.
Mr Chair, I move the report of the Infrastructure Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the 15th of August 2023, be adopted.
Second it.
It has been moved by councillor Wines and seconded by councillor Hammond that the report of the Infrastructure Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the 15th of August 2023, be adopted. Councillor Wines, you've got the call.
Thank you, Mr Chair. I just will make some comments generally about the presentation that we saw last week. It's on a thing called curbside asset information systems. And it is a operational device that we use to monitor and maintain our curbside assets. So council has completed a full spatial audit of all parking signs and associated roadside infrastructure across the city. The audit found there was no asset register necessarily holding signs and lines in a single database. Well, now we do, through the curbside asset information system, which is an end-to-end solution created to allow all users to view interactive imagery of assets remotely. Utilize artificial intelligence to process and analyze captured data. Integrate data into corporate systems, generate automatic notifications when asset conditions rate, asset condition ratings are not met. That means if there's vandalism or its sign is missing or if it's damaged in any way, we are notified and can replace it. Maintain location data and create plans for changes to signs and lines. The curbside asset information system commenced in mid-2022 by introducing up-to-date parking asset register and spatial data collection. And it followed council's ongoing rationalization of on, of on-street assets or curbside assets. The committee was shown a video of data being captured. And as well, you can see that the footage utilizes mobile equipment, including high-res cameras, remote sensory technology and GPS receivers to obtain data on existing curbside allocation of assets, their positions, metadata and current condition. Along with data capturing, KIS uses machine learning technologies which utilize visual patterns recognition and a workflow to extract geographic reference data of assets and vehicle movement. An artificial intelligence change detection process. The AI change detection process automatically categorizes assets and defects by applying condition rating and allowing users to analyze data, including panoramic, 360 degree and, and direct imagery, review those assets and then make recommendations on them. So what it's about, it's about a, a single source of truth to make sure that we understand all of the assets that we have on our footpath. So that includes your signs, that includes your parking meters, that sometimes includes things like bins and benches and other types of council assets that sit just beyond the curb line. What this allows us to do is to manage that better. We're always looking for opportunities to manage our assets more cost-effectively and more, in a more timely manner. And this system will allow that. So this session, we're focused a lot on operational matters and how we can, and the things that council is doing to identify issues and correct them quickly, as well as to be able to make sure that the on-street parking that we do possess, which is often a highly contested and very valuable asset to many local residents, can be monitored and amended as appropriate. There were some condition, excuse me, there were some petitions considered by the committee last week and I look forward to comment by councillors.
Thank you councillor Wines. Further speakers on the Infrastructure Committee report? Councillor Johnston.
Yes, I rise to speak on item B of the Infrastructure Committee report and ask that item B is taken, Sari Adam, for voting purposes.
Thank you, noted.
Yes, I rise today to say sadly, I'm not surprised, but I am disappointed by the inaction by this council with respect to the dysfunctional and dangerous intersection of Clivedon Road, sorry, Clivedon Avenue and Oxley Road in Corinda. For those of you who don't know, this intersection is a major east-west connection point. All along Oxley Road, we have problems connecting east-west because of the rail line. And this is a major east-west connection point between Oxley, the Centenary suburbs and the Oxley Road corridor. This intersection also services a number of major community facilities, including a huge, huge retirement village that has been built. It services Corinda State School, 600, nearly 700 students. It services Corinda State High School, almost 2,000 students. It is the closest intersection to the Dunlop Park Memorial Pool. Anybody who drives along, anybody who drives along Oxley Road or uses Clivedon Avenue knows this intersection is a basket case. The reason it is a basket case is because there are no proper turning lanes. You basically have one or two lanes, depending on which way you're coming. There are no turning lanes, there are no indentured turning lanes. And there are no controlled green arrows to help you safely turn the corner. Now, we know that there is a lot of traffic coming from the Centenary suburbs. And, and it is councillor Hutton's residents who are equally impacted by how dysfunctional and dangerous this intersection is. Many, many people in her ward would be taking their children to school at Corinda State School and Corinda State High School. And it is, I think, incumbent upon all the local councillors who rely on access to these schools to make sure that people can get there safely. That's councillor Strunk, myself, councillor Hutton and certainly councillor Griffiths. Because Oxley is split across four suburbs. But I guess my concern is that council has identified that there is a problem. So the report before us today says, and I quote, "Council conducted a preliminary investigation for the purpose of developing an interim upgrade solution to improve safety and reduce congestion at this intersection." Preliminary investigations have identified the interim upgrade solution would require the resumption of adjacent land and further detailed work to clarify the scope and design. There's no funding allocated to undertake the work. Council anticipates delivery, this is the weird bit, council anticipates delivery between 2023 and 2026. Well, it is 2023. So council's saying, no, they're not going to do anything, but then they say, well, yes, we will. So I think council's trying to have a bob each way here. And I know councillor Hutton will want to stand up and speak strongly in support of this action because her residents will want to see a better intersection to facilitate access to schools and the main road. And I'm, I'm quite certain the candidates running out in councillor Hutton's area at the election will be happy to point out her track record on supporting intersection upgrades that will benefit the wider community. So look, I don't think council's done enough here. They have identified that there is a problem. Well, you know, we knew that. Nearly 500 residents have signed this petition, many of them who are immediately local to the site. It is dysfunctional. In fact councillor Marks went out there a few years ago with me and we had to sit through multiple changes of lights before we could get through that intersection. And she said, councillor Johnston, why don't you do something about this intersection? Well, guess what? I have been. This is, this is an important intersection that needs to have an increase in capacity, functionality and safety. We need to make sure pedestrians can cross safely. We need to make sure there's bike infrastructure to encourage safe travel to school. And we also need to make sure that there are proper and sufficient turning lanes and arrows for drivers who are turning in all directions because of access to Oxley Road. And this council's response is clearly inadequate. Because council won't do its job, I will do its job for it. And I move the following amendment. Item B, Infrastructure Committee report, number one. Page three, paragraph 16, delete the last sentence stating therefore and add the following sentence. Undertakes immediate upgrades, including traffic light upgrades, including green arrows, to more effectively manage traffic movements. And uses the existing verge, which has been designated road reserve for more than 30 years, to provide for a dedicated left turn, straight through and right turn lanes on the western side of Clivedon Avenue at Oxley Road, with, until a major intersection upgrade can be undertaken in future. And the second one is page four, paragraph 20, attachment A. In the fourth paragraph, it's essentially repeating the same item that is in the body of the report. And that is to delete the last sentence starting therefore and add the following sentence. Undertakes immediate upgrades, including traffic light upgrades, including green arrows, to more effectively manage traffic movements. And uses the existing verge, which has been designated road reserve for more than 30 years, to provide for a dedicated left turn, straight through and right turn lanes on the western side of Clivedon Avenue at Oxley Road, until a major intersection upgrade can be undertaken in future. And I need a second to Steve.
Seconded, yep. Right. We have a amendment to item B in the Infrastructure Committee report, moved by councillor Johnston and seconded by councillor Griffiths. That on page three, forgive me councillor Johnston, I may ask for some corrections with your handwriting. Page three, paragraph 16, delete the last sentence starting therefore and add the following sentence. Undertakes immediate upgrades, including traffic lights, upgrades, widening. Is that widening councillor? Including green arrows to more efficiently manage traffic movements and uses the existing verge, which has been dedicated road reserve for more than 30 years, to provide for a dedicated left turn, straight through and right turn lanes on the western side of Clivenden? Clivenden Avenue at Oxley Road, until a major intersection upgrade can be undertaken in the future. Item two, page four, paragraph 20 of the attachment A. The, thank you, fourth paragraph, delete the last sentence starting therefore, add the following sentence. Undertakes immediate upgrades, including traffic light upgrades, including green arrows to more effectively manage traffic movements. And uses the existing verge, which has been designed, designated, sorry, designated reserve for more than 30 years to provide for a dedicated left turn, straight through and right turn lanes on the western side of Clivenden Avenue at Oxley Road, until a major intersection can be undertaken in the future. Councillor Johnston, to your amendment please.
Yes, thank you. Look, my amendment is fairly simple. Council has identified that there is a problem here. And I certainly recognize that within the scheme of the budget, there are lots of things that need to be funded. However, it is unreasonable for council to state that it needs to acquire land to complete an upgrade to this intersection when land has already been delegated as road reserve. Back in the 1980s, Corinda State School was relocated from the corner of Clivedon Avenue and Oxley Road, further down Clivedon Avenue. And a large townhouse complex was built on the corner. And at that time in the 80s, a large section of land was reserved for future intersection upgrade. It's just that over the last 30-plus years, council has not done the work to, to upgrade the intersection. Now, the amendments that I've put forward today only address a small part of what needs to be done. More importantly, there needs to be proper indentured turning lanes on. More importantly, there needs to be proper indented turning lanes on Oxley Road, both turning into Clivedon Avenue heading east and heading west. This would require some resumptions, I presume, on the other side of the road, but the two initiatives that I've put forward in the amendments here today can be done by council now without any resumptions. One, that is to upgrade the traffic lights. That could be done by council tomorrow. Part of the problem at this intersection is that the traffic lights are not fully controlled at this intersection. We have those fade lights where the turning, the turning vehicles don't get a green arrow. So if you're waiting to turn, you block up the lane and you can't get through because of all the oncoming traffic, particularly in the afternoon peak. So we need proper management via traffic lights of traffic movements through the intersection. That protects pedestrians and it enables an orderly movement of vehicles through the intersection. So that's just, that's a basic. Council could upgrade the traffic lights. That's a matter of, you know, just changing the existing traffic lights that are there. It doesn't require resumptions. And secondly, I'm suggesting that one of the biggest issues is as you are heading eastbound towards Oxley Road, when you come over the rail line bridge, and this is particularly beneficial to councillor Hutton's residents. I used to represent that part of Oxley and I know how many of them come through there and I understand why her residents would be concerned about this and have signed the petition in strong numbers. It will facilitate proper safe access both to the school precinct and also to Oxley Road. At the moment, you essentially have a small indented right turn lane and one traffic lane, which is for the left turn and the straight through. What's actually happening in practice is that cars are jamming up next to each other in one lane so that there can be a left turn lane, there can be a straight through lane and there can be a right turn lane. But it's not wide enough to do that. It is dangerous what is happening. Council required these setbacks when the school left this site and the land was developed more than 30 years ago, anticipating that the intersection upgrade would be undertaken. Now, that's an early version of the LGIP that council's botched. They've just forgotten about this project ever since. It is easy for council to adjust the lane widths in this area to make sure that there are turning lanes and straight through lanes. Now, much, much more needs to be done, but I understand that that would be more expensive and require resumptions and require a major intersection upgrade. But these upgrades are things council can do as interim measures to make sure that we are progressively improving infrastructure for residents of the western suburbs and the southwestern suburbs. I want to see my residents being able to safely move around the local area. I want residents in Oxley, in the Centenary suburbs, as much as I'd like them to stay in the Centenary suburbs, the school catchment for Corinda State High School and Corinda State School covers those areas. So those people are coming here. We want to make sure they come safely and in an orderly way. We also want to make sure that pedestrians and cyclists are getting upgrades as well. So rather than council just say, no, no, it's all too hard, you go on the future waiting list. Well, guess what? It's not on the LGIP, it's not on the LGIP or the LTI. So when council says it'll be considered in line with future priorities, it's not on any list anywhere at all. So I want to make sure that council does what it can now by upgrading the traffic lights and also upgrading at least that intersection where there is the land available to do the change. And I think that that would make a huge difference to the functionality of that intersection. Absolutely, the biggest problem, of course, is dealing with the Oxley Road north-south alignment, which does not have proper turning lanes. It needs indented turning lanes and it needs green arrows and we need to make sure that that is dealt with as soon as possible. But these are things that council can do straight away. They could make a difference and they will deliver some relief for residents in Oxley and certainly surrounding suburbs. I just want to see people to be able to get to where they're going more safely, more efficiently and certainly reduce congestion around our local schools. I would hope that councillor Sutton will support this. It would be hugely beneficial for her residents. I hear, I hear the deputy mayor sniping away, but let's hope she hops up and speaks to this amendment.
Through, through the chair, please, deputy mayor.
I, maybe she'll stand up and speak to it. I mean, koalas die in her area, she gets road improvements. I don't know, does it, does it take someone to die here? Is that what has to happen? I, I hope it doesn't come to that. I want to see council investing in the infrastructure needed to support local communities and the safe orderly movement of traffic. I don't think Oxley Road necessarily needs to be turned into a highway. I, I've not been supportive of this. I want to see the intersections upgraded along Oxley Road so that local traffic movements can be better facilitated. We don't need to attract more traffic into the Oxley Road peninsula. We just need it to move more safely and more effectively. So these two amendments will do that and I encourage all councillors to vote for the amendment.
Thank you councillor Johnston. Further speakers? No, councillor Griffiths, are you standing?
Yeah, so just like, to get up quickly to support councillor Johnston's motion. Certainly what councillor Johnston is proposing, I think, is a reasonable solution. It's an action that is using available land and available resources. We've seen 500 residents sign this petition and I know there are thousands of residents who are affected, as well as one of the south side's largest schools. Oxley Road is, experiences significant delays, it's unsafe and it's congested. And that's not only for pedestrians and bikes, active travel, but also particularly for pedestrians. There has been, and council, this administration has done, allowed significant density to increase along Oxley Road and at Sherwood. But what we haven't seen and what people should realise is that we don't get the infrastructure that goes with that density. Certainly my residence in Oxley in Durack, and I have represented this area that you now represent councillor Johnston, has been an issue for a long time. I suppose this is in stark contrast to what I heard the Lord Mayor claiming before, that 89%, I think it was 89 or 90% of council's $4 billion budget is spent on the suburbs. Well, it's not. We know that there's 1.7 billion being spent on a 200 metre tunnel, 560 million was spent on Kingswood Smith Drive, $200 million on the Kangaroo Point Bridge, $70 million on Breakfast Creek Bridge and we know another 140 million is being spent on another inner city park. I'm very interested to see councillor Hutton's response and whether councillor Hutton will stand up for her local community. Because I know the people at Oxley want action. They've wanted action for years and they don't want someone who's sitting back lounging in council, lounging in an administration where there's no voice, where there's no speaking up and where there's no action. And that's, unfortunately, I gave councillor Hutton the time to, to stand up and speak, put her, put her, have her say, but unfortunately, we've had nothing come from that say. So I call on councillor, through you, Mr Chair, I call on councillor Hutton to have a position, to say that she will speak up, say that she, what she will do for the residents so that we get some action from this very ineffective, very lazy LMP council that is not spending money on the suburbs. I support this motion, it's a good motion, it's a sensible motion and everyone in this chamber should support it. Thank you.
Thank you councillor. Can I just remind you also to direct your comments through the chair, even if it's to your colleagues on the same side of the chamber? Thank you. Councillor, any further speakers? Councillor Wines?
Yeah, thanks, Mr Chair. Look, just really quickly, in response to this proposed amendment, you can even consider it through the petition that is before us today, that the advice, the preliminary advice is that the turning arrows would not be able to be added without an additional lane. The additional lane would require land resumptions. That is spoken to within the petition formally. There's no objection in concept, but there is further work that must be done. So the urgency in this is not, is not able to be satisfied and as a result, I also, there's been quite a bit of debate on this already. I move that the motion be put.
Seconded.
We have a procedural motion that the amendment now be put. All those in favour say aye?
Aye.
Those against say no?
No.
I think the ayes have it. The ayes have it. So now I will put the amendment. All those in fav-
Point of order. I still get a writer reply.
Sorry, just, just one moment. Right, got you. Thank you. Councillor Johnston, my, my apologies, you do have a five-minute writer reply.
Yeah, I thought I did, thank you. Look, thank you to councillor Griffiths for standing to speak on this issue. I think twice you've represented that part of Oxley that adjoins this area and now you're just a little bit further south. So I know you understand how dysfunctional this intersection actually is. Councillor Wines sort of had a bob each way with that, it was quite interesting. It wasn't a bad idea, I didn't say it in quite those words, but, you know, said there was some merit in it, but still said he wouldn't do it. Now, that's not good enough. Council already has a huge section of road reserve on this intersection, on the Clivedon Avenue, the north-western corner of this intersection. And there is room here to widen and to install upgraded traffic lights. That would make it safer for residents going to Corinda State School, Corinda High School, going to the Dunlop Pool, going to the shops, the train station, everything. It just, just, it'd be such a functional and practical upgrade that would deliver immediate benefits to how traffic moves through our area. And most importantly, what it would do would discourage, or it would provide a better way for people to use the arterial road rather than rat-run through the back streets of Corinda and Sherwood, which is what's going on. This traffic, because these intersections on Oxley Road are so congested and are not properly controlled by traffic lights, we are getting a huge volume of rat-running through the back of Corinda. And that is all the traffic from councillor Hutton's area as well. And those cars desperately want to avoid Oxley Road and the intersections because they're so dysfunctional. So I think it's disappointing that the LNP are choosing to say, no, they won't support this, because it is something they can do. We already own this land, it is wide enough and designated for road. It has been since the mid 80s when the school was moved up the street, you know, 500 metres. It's just that council has neglected this area for so long that they've forgotten that they already have designated this land for future road upgrades. They've just never done it. So because council won't do it, I think it's incumbent upon me to do it and I appreciate the support of councillor Griffiths as the former councillor for the southern side of this intersection. It is disappointing though, of course, that the LNP aren't prepared to support the amendment and I'll be very happy to tell Oxley and Corinda residents that councillor Hutton voted against upgrading this intersection because it will hugely impact her residents and I'm quite certain that her failure to support local intersection upgrades will be noted. I guess she won't be putting a sign up over there saying, I don't support this intersection upgrade. I mean, she's put signs up everywhere else in her ward, I'm told. Residents keep asking me, what, what are these signs? But anyway, I just think this is an important project. I want to see it proceed. We need to do something to relieve this, this dysfunctional and unsafe intersection and upgrading the lights and providing indented and properly controlled turning lanes is the way to do that. I encourage all councillors to vote for the amendment.
Thank you councillor. We will now put the amendment to the report. All those in favour say aye?
Aye.
Those against say no?
No.
Leave the noes have it.
Division.
Division called by councillor Johnston and seconded by councillor Griffiths. Noes to my right and ayes to my right and noes to my left, sorry. Clerks, please read the result.
Mr Chair, the noes have it. The voting being seven in favour and 19 against.
Councillors, the amendment has been lost. Please return to your seat. Councillors, are there any further speakers to the report? I see no one rising. Councillor Marks, you're not speaking to the, you're not further speaking to the report? No. Councillor Wines, you've got writer reply? No. We will now put the report of item A, starting with item A. All those in favour of item A of the report, say aye?
Aye.
Those against? So, those against? No one? No? Okay. Item B of the report, all those in favour say aye?
Aye.
Those against say no?
No.
The ayes have it. No division? Excellent, we move on. City planning. Councillor Allen.
Thank you, Mr Chair. I move that the report of the City Planning and Suburban Renewal Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the 15th of August 2023, be adopted.
Seconded.
It has been moved by councillor Allen and seconded by councillor Atwood that the report of the City Planning and Suburban Renewal Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the 15th of August 2023, be adopted. Councillor Allen, you've got the call.
Thank you, Mr Chair. Item A was a committee presentation on 301 Wickham Street, Fortitude Valley. The approved development is a 32-storey tower comprising of 327 build-to-rent units and incorporates both residential and commercial aspects featuring office and retail space. The build-to-rent model aims to provide housing security and affordable rental options for tenants seeking longer-term tenancy arrangements. The development's diverse infill dwelling supply addresses challenges related to land supply and growth in the Brisbane area. The development is conveniently located within proximity to the Fortitude Valley train station and other high-frequency public transport options. 301 Wickham Street provides convenient access to local shopping and amenities. Unit composition of 301 Wickham Street includes 50 studios, 128 one-bedroom units, 75 two-bedroom units and 74 three-bedroom units. Private balconies and winter gardens are incorporated into the design, ranging in size from eight square metres to 69 square metres. Parking infrastructure spans five levels, including two basement levels and three podium levels. Residents will have access to 361 car parking spaces while visitors will have access to 50 car parking spaces. For cyclists, the development provides 435 bike spaces for residents and 45 bike spaces for visitors. This well-designed development encompasses various communal amenities such as dedicated work-from-home zone, a gym, a yoga studio, a massage room and communal- work-from-home zone, a gym, a yoga studio, a massage room, and communal lounge areas. Additionally, the rooftop communal recreation area comprises of a pool, sun deck, dining room with a kitchen, bar and games room, and barbecue areas. The design aims to enhance energy efficiency, resident comfort, and operational cost savings. Sustainable features include rooftop solar panels, rainwater harvesting, water efficiency fixtures, and a sub-proprietary architectural design that aligns with council's Buildings That Breathe principles. Landscaping incorporates vertical greenery integrated into the podium, elevated gardens on the rooftop deck and podium, as well as ground-floor landscaping and public spaces. The development was approved because it encompasses a comprehensive range of features and amenities that aim to create a thriving and inclusive community within a well-designed and strategically located building. Importantly, the development provides 327 units in a busy and economically vibrant part of our city. Lastly, 301 Wickham Street supports the Shrima Council's vision to ensure Brisbane remains highly livable, affordable, and sustainable for current and future generations, and I'll leave further debate to the chamber.
Thank you, Counselor Allen. Are there any further speakers? I see no one rising. Counselor Allen, write a reply? No. We will now put the report. All those in favour of the City Planning report say aye.
Aye.
Those against say no. The ayes have it.
Division. Seconded.
We have a division called by the deputy mayor and seconded by Counselor Hutton. Ayes to my right and nos to my left. Please ring the bells. Clerks, please read the result.
Mr Chair, the ayes have it. The voting being 25 in favour.
Councillors, please return to your seats. The report has passed. Counselor Davis, a bit of shush, please, councillors. Counselor Davis, Environment, Parks, Sustainability Committee, please.
Thank you, Mr Chair. Mr Chair, I move that the report of the Environment, Parks, and Sustainability Committee meeting on Tuesday, 15th of August 2023 be adopted.
Seconded. It has been moved by Counselor Davis and seconded by Counselor Mackay that the report of the Environment, Parks, and Sustainability Committee meeting held on Tuesday the 15th of August 2023 be adopted. Counselor Davis.
Thank you, Mr Chair. Last week's committee presentation was on the recently completed Bradbury Park Improvement Project, which has already become one of Brisbane's favourite park destinations. The committee heard about the evolution of this project and the design process for Brisbane's most distinctive play space since the unique and hugely popular playground at Fru Park. The transformation of Bradbury Park has been a three-year project with stage one completed in 2020. This stage included the construction of the Magic Forest, a nature play space for young kids, as well as the award-winning scooter track. Stage two was completed earlier this year and delivered the new play space as well as an upgraded car park, pathways, amenities, and landscaping. The concept brief for the new playground was based on the idea of a biological city and reflects the natural environment around it. That vision was integrated into the design with the playscape structured around towers or hollows and connected by bridges to create endless possibilities for play, interaction, creativity, and discovery. It features a number of innovative designs. Coloured glass panels are strategically placed to allow multicoloured light to change the mood in the hollows at different times of the day, and that's been inspired by the local rainbow lorikeets that you can find around the park. Importantly, the design was modelled and positioned around the existing trees so that the structure achieves 80% shade cover for most of the warmer months of the year. Charred hardwood has been used for the structure's external cladding, mimicking the trunks of the neighbouring ironbark trees, and also keeping maintenance low. As I said last week, Mr Chair, I toured the park with the delegation of mayors and CEOs from Perth, who made sure that Bradbury Park was on their itinerary. They were absolutely blown away with the scale and uniqueness of what they saw and what Bradbury Park has to offer. There was no doubt that there was a lot of playscape envy, and I was very proud to showcase this extraordinary architectural play space, which is just another example of what the Shrima Council is delivering for our residents and visitors to enjoy. Mr Chair, we also had two park naming submissions. The formal naming of Canumbera Street Park Cooperoo as Pat Ryan Park, and the formal naming of Prospect Terrace Park Kelvin Grove as Billy Matier Reserve. With that, I'll leave further debate to the chamber. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Davis. Are there any further speakers? Counselor Hammond.
I rise very briefly because I've spoken about the fabulous Bradbury Park many times in this place, and I would like to thank Counselor Davis for showcasing Bradbury Park to the committee so everyone can truly appreciate how wonderful this play space is. If you haven't been over there and had a look, please do. You might have had Perth residents going to have a look. I've got very envious Moreton Bay Shire council coming to have a look with me very shortly. But again, come and have a look. And another big shout out for the Kedron Heights Kindy, because without stumbling onto them, the Magic Forest would never have eventuated. So thanks again to Kedron Heights Kindy. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Further speakers?
Mr Chair, I rise to speak about the renaming of Prospect Terrace Park.
Counselor Jenkinson.
Sorry. Council received a petition requesting Prospect Terrace Park at 57 Prospect Terrace Kelvin Grove be named as Billy Matier Reserve. Prospect Terrace Park is a local landscape amenity park and features a bus stop and additional sheltered seating. In 1893, Brisbane experienced its biggest flood in recorded history. Mr Billy Matier, a skilled stockman, was visiting the homestead of Henry Somerset when he volunteered to ride eastward to Petrie to notify the Postmaster General in Brisbane of the massive flood on its way. The ride was more than 60 kilometres in cyclonic conditions over rough mountainous terrain to warn the residents of Brisbane. Mr Matier was a local resident of Paddington Red Hill area and a former Brisbane City Council tram driver. Mr Matier's tram route stopped outside the air raid shelters located on the corner of Prospect Terrace and Kelvin Grove Road. As a gateway to the central business district from the northern suburbs, this nondescript precinct forms a part of Brisbane's history. A 2018 paper titled Unpacking a Legend compiled by Dr Margaret Cook and Brisbane City Council archivist Ms Annabelle Lloyd documented the heroic ride and Mr Matier's links to the local community. Furthermore, Mr Matier's efforts have been documented in a feature-length film, Deluge, directed and produced in Queensland. It's proposed to erect a park naming sign on Kelvin Grove Road at the frontage of the park. Formerly naming Prospect Terrace Park as Billy Matier Reserve will provide recognition of Mr Matier's heroics and his contribution to Brisbane's history. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Jenkinson. Any further speakers to the report? See no one. Counselor Davis, write a reply?
Thank you, Mr Chair. It was remiss of me not to mention earlier the great work by Andrew Inspe in terms of coming up with this concept, but in no small way, this came because of the advocacy of, of Counselor Fiona Hammond for her community. This was a dust bowl of a park, and to see what we have today, as I said, is in no small part to the vision of the local ward councillor. Thank you very much, Mr Chair.
Thank you, Counselor Davis. We will now put the report. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against say no. The ayes have it. Counselor Marks, City Standards Committee report, please.
Thank you, Mr Chair. I move that the report of the City Standards Committee meeting held on Tuesday the 15th of August 2023 be adopted.
Seconded. It has been moved by Counselor Marks and seconded by Counselor Adaman that the report of the City Standards Committee meeting held on Tuesday the 15th of August 2023 be adopted. Counselor Marks, you've got the call.
Yes, thank you, Mr Chair. I just wanted to briefly mention that we had a presentation last week on the unfortunate situation where we were having to replace copper wiring with aluminium cable. Shane MacLeod, as always, managed to do a very good presentation, and I'm happy to leave debate to the chamber. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Marks. Are there any further speakers? Being none rising, we will now put the report. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against say no. The ayes have it. Counselor Howard, how are you?
Thank you, Mr Chair. I am extremely well. Mr Chair, I move that the report of the Community Arts and Nighttime Economy Committee meeting held on Tuesday the 15th of August 2023 be adopted.
Seconded.
It has been moved by Counselor Howard and seconded by Counselor Landers that the report of the Community Arts and Nighttime Economy Committee meeting held on Tuesday the 15th of August 2023 be adopted. Counselor Howard.
Thank you, Mr Chair. And before moving to the report, I would just like to put some comments into the handside, mostly because of Counsel Collier's question to the Lord Mayor earlier today, which was about why does this council not support women's sport at council lease facilities? So, Mr Chair, through you, I just want to put on the record that the Shrima Council has spent $3.2 million as a testament to women's sport. And it would, I know that Counsel Collier is a new councillor, but perhaps she should talk to some of her local organisations, because no less than three of the 12 that we have been funding in just this last 12 months alone are in her ward. So, through you, Mr Chair, I really want to impress on this chamber the support that this council gives to women's sport. And that was absolutely on display at the FIFA World Cup, Matilda handing over the keys to the city as the Lord Mayor mentioned earlier. I was thrilled and delighted to be there. It was very moving. I don't know about Strawberry Kisses and whether that might ever become, I'm not sure that might ever become a hit again, but, you know, with my nighttime economy hat on, I'm happy to go to a nightclub and sing Strawberry Kisses if that's what it takes. We've had lots of Gold Star and Little Star ceremonies right across the city, and I really encourage all of our councillors to attend those ceremonies. They are extra special. I want to give a big shout out to the libraries as well for the 24/7 library lockers. They're proving to be absolutely amazing. And I also want to give a big shout out to the Brisbane Kite Festival. I understand that was a huge success, Counsel Atwood and Counselor Murphy. And of course, the India Day Fair and the Korean Cultural Festival. It was a big weekend, and I was off to the ECHA just to finish it all off, because I thought that I couldn't let the week go without one more visit to the ECHA. But before I did that, I went to the Sporties for their bake-off, their annual Sporties bake-off, and you can't get any better than to go along there and to, to see the most amazing array of pickles and food and entertainment. And I just want to say a big shout out and a big thank you to Sporties who have constantly supported our LGBTQ+ community for years and years and years, and it was wonderful to see them all there yet again and to support them. Now, moving to the report, we had a presentation on the Business Hotline, supporting our community, and supporting our community, it absolutely does. It's a 24/7 number. It's been going since 2012. We have applications to film in Brisbane, which are just amazing. I think one, one of the Hemsworth brothers might have been around a few years ago, and we know that people love filming in Brisbane. We have applications to whole festivals and events, commercial park use, gourmet food trucks, and requests to light up Brisbane, all done by the amazing team that we have with our Business Hotline. And I want to send a big thank you to all of the council officers that, that make this such a special hotline that, that we know are helping all people right across Brisbane, and I'll leave further debate to the chamber.
Thank you, Counselor Howard. Further speakers to the report? No one standing. We will now put the report. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against say no. The ayes have it. Counselor Cunningham, Finance Committee report, please.
Thanks, Mr Chair. I move that the report of the City, of the Finance and City Governance Report on Tuesday the 15th of August 2023 be adopted. Sorry, Mr Chair, I didn't have the piece of paper in front of me, so you caught me off guard.
That's okay.
Seconded.
It has been moved by Counselor Cunningham and seconded by Counselor Hutton that the report of the Finance and City Governance Committee meeting held on Tuesday the 15th of August 2023 be adopted. Counselor Cunningham, you've got the call.
Thanks, Mr Chair. Last week in committee, we had a presentation from our City Resilience Manager, updating councillors on plan, on our plans in council to prepare residents ahead of this severe weather season. As many of us in this chamber would know, we run an annual awareness campaign with targeted messaging this year for high bushfire and flood-risk suburbs. We want to make sure that all residents in Brisbane check and know their bushfire risk, check and know their flood risk, sign up for our Brisbane Severe Weather Alerts, prepare their emergency kits, and have an evacuation plan. Events proposed for the next 12 months include, in addition to the ECHA show, the Emergency Services Expo, which will again be held at Victoria Park, information nights and pop-up events, and special sessions for culturally and linguistically diverse communities. Council Stand at the ECHA this year, many of you would have got along too, I hope, provided residents with information about how to prepare for all hazards, including severe weather, storms, and floods, bushfires, and heatwaves. I'm pleased to inform the chamber that across the 10 days, we had over 2,600 meaningful engagements and conversations with residents. These included interactive opportunities for visitors, including residents checking their flood and bushfire risks, how to prepare their homes adequately, and what to pack in emergency kits. I also want to sincerely thank those officers who gave up their day job to support the ECHA stall this year. I commend the report to the chamber.
Thank you, Counselor Cunningham. Are there any further speakers? See no one rising. We'll now put the report. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against say no. The ayes have it. Councillors, are there any petitions? See no one rising. Counselor Griffiths, you've got a petition? You all right, mate?
Thank you. I just have a petition in relation to the naming of Joey Taylor Place that I'd like to present to council.
Thank you. Are there any further petitions? May I have a motion to accept the petitions, please? Counselor Hutton.
Mr Chair, I move that petitions as presented be received and referred to the committee concerned for consideration and report.
Seconded. It has been moved by Counselor Hutton and seconded by Counselor Griffiths that the petitions as presented be received and referred to the committee concerned for consideration and report. General business, councillors, are there any statements required as a result of the Office of the Independent Assessor or Councillor Ethics Committee orders? See no one rising. Councillors, are there any items of general business? Counselor Owen.
Thank you, Mr Chair. Mr Chair, I rise tonight to speak on two matters, sorry, three matters. Firstly, a young local man who has just recently participated in the World Championships of Speed Cubing, the Brisbane Super Kings Turf Wicket, and also Vietnam Veterans Day. Can I firstly say, in regards to young Charlie Eggers, he, I have spoken about him in this chamber before, and for those of us who were around when Rubik's cubes first came in, we will know how difficult those Rubik's cubes are, and the fact that Charlie can solve these, not only in seconds but blindfolded, it just still amazes me. All he does is looks at the colours on the cube and then puts the blindfold on, and he's away, and it's seconds. And Charlie competed in the World Championships recently, three weeks after breaking a finger. So he was first in the first round and then came out not, not quite at the top of the field in the final, but I just think it's amazing that we have young people like this competing on a world level in a particularly complex craft. And, and can I say, it's not just about looking at the colours and trying to just move them all about. There's a lot of algorithms that apparently go on behind the scenes, and he spends hours and hours and hours practising and really going through that. So I just think it's amazing, and we need to acknowledge our young people when they're achieving at this level. I'd also just like to reflect on the Brisbane Super Kings new turf wicket, and yesterday, sorry, on Sunday, I joined with Counselor Strunk and the Speaker of the Federal Parliament, federal member for Oxley, former councillor Milton Dick, and Senator Paul Scar to support the Brisbane Super Kings. And can I say, Counselor Strunk and I were on the council team, and Milton Dick and Paul Scar were on the federal team, and Counselor Strunk and I have the auspicious reflection of being able to say that we took a wicket. And, you know, I, I didn't realise my bowling a wicket. And, you know, I didn't realise my bowling was that good until I took out former councillor Milton Dick. But it was a great opportunity to join with a local club that has got its foundations up at the Matthew Commonwealth Sports Fields at Heathwood. And they're expanding so rapidly, and we're supporting junior sport so much, that our young girls' team have got the facilities, both facilities have actually got change rooms that are capable of supporting people from all different teams and making sure that they're non-gender specific. So that is a way that we have stepped this forward. But it is a great opportunity to expand the options for young people and to make sure that they actually have these facilities in the local community in walking distance of their home. I will suffice to say, councillor Hammond, I'm not playing in your cricket tournament because, yeah, I've got a bit of a record with a bat and a ball. So, I think for a workplace health and safety perspective, it's probably a good thing. Importantly, I would like to reflect on last Friday being Vietnam Veterans Day. And this is an important day in the calendar for many people. And it's also a day of reflection for how many servicemen came home and were not treated appropriately for the service that they engaged in. In particular, during the Vietnam War, we had the situation of conscription and national service. Eight hundred and four thousand two hundred and eighty-six young Australian men registered for national service. And as the patron of the National Servicemen's Association of Queensland, I thank them all for their service. Two hundred and ninety thousand wore the uniforms of the Royal Australian Navy, the Australian Army and the Royal Australian Air Force. They saw active service in Borneo, Malaya, Vietnam and Papua New Guinea. Many of them actually did their basic training and, like my father-in-law, never deployed. The foundation that they received from undertaking national service was a foundation for life. It was one of resilience, strong friendships that would last a lifetime, but it created an unbreakable bond. Unfortunately, for two hundred and twelve of them, two in Borneo and two hundred and ten in Vietnam, they also paid the ultimate sacrifice for our nation. On Friday, I was able to join the National Servicemen's Association branch of Bayside to honour four of our Nashos. Kenneth H. Gant, Raymond C. Komod, Ian W. Kingston and Joseph F. Ramsey, who are all acknowledged on the memorial down at Darling Point at Winham. They were all Winham boys. And as the mother of a twenty-one-year-old, I really feel for Kenneth Gant's mother. Because when he left, he was twenty-one, he never came home. And his nickname was Bing. And he actually recorded a number of songs for his mother. And I actually have a recording of the songs that he made. And it's quite eerie when you hear him sing. And I just would like to put into the public records some information about Kenneth H. Gant, because it goes to speak of the many young men who signed up for national, who signed up as Nashos, but also who, when they were called up, whilst it might not have been their first choice, they did their duty to our country. Kenneth Howard Gant was born on the sixth of January nineteen forty-five to Howard and Beryl in Brisbane. He grew up in Belmont, went to Belmont Public School and became a butcher. An outgoing, warm personality, Kenny Gant fancied himself as a singer. His family nicknamed him Bing. He regularly sang at parties. And on one occasion at a pub, when the band gave him the microphone, he wouldn't get off. He was called up for national service on the thirtieth of June nineteen sixty-five. His mother, Beryl, later said that neither he nor she agreed with it, but he wasn't a coward. And like most national servicemen, he'd never heard of Vietnam. He had no idea where it was. He did his training at Pakapunyul with the Third Infantry Training Battalion, and then went into Six RAR Delta Company, Shawwater Bay and other training areas, before he deployed to Vietnam in mid nineteen sixty-six. As many of you know and some actually have heard, the Australian Task Force at New Ida was attacked on the seventeenth of August nineteen sixty-six, and Delta Company Six RAR was out there in the Long Tan plantation on the afternoon of the eighteenth of August nineteen sixty-six. At four o'clock in the afternoon, the enemy attacked, and eleven platoon was surrounded on three sides. Kenny Gant was one of the first killed. A machine gunner, along with others, he was killed with ground-level fifty-calibre machine gun fire. He was only twenty-one years old. Seventeen Australians were killed that day at Long Tan. What is less often said is that eleven were national servicemen. The day after the battle, private Robin Langdon-Pom Rechner of Delta Company Six RAR was one of those clearing the battlefield. And he said, "I came up to eleven platoon position, my mates lying in an ark, facing upwards, rifles still on their shoulders as if they were frozen in a drill, and only needed a touch to bring them back to life again. They hadn't been touched by artillery, thank goodness, and the rain had washed away any blood. They looked peaceful and dignified, dying in place, doing their duty." And that's when the tears started. No one was dried. I know I wasn't. Neil Rankin was the platoon sergeant from Ten Platoon. Three years later, again in Vietnam, he was tasked with finding the place where the Long Tan cross would be placed, then behind enemy lines. He said, "I looked for the eleven platoon position, and with the heel of my boot, I marked the spot. I wanted the Long Tan cross to be placed on earth soaked by blood of young Australians fighting and dying for what they believed. What we can say now to all of them is thank you for your service."
Thank you, councillor Owen. Councillor Cassidy?
Thanks very much, Chair. I rise to speak on three items tonight. The Voice referendum, housing and women's facilities at council-owned lease sites. I spent time over the weekend speaking to and hearing from Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander people about what the Voice would mean to them, about recognising Australia's sixty-five-thousand-year history in our constitution, and about the outcomes the Voice would deliver in communities. The opportunity is real and is before us right now. To see what the other side of politics was up to regarding the referendum over the weekend was absolutely shocking. To see Liberal Party members holding no rallies, Liberal politicians attending the CPAC conference alongside some of the most offensive racists I have ever seen in my life says a lot about the LNP. The LNP have become one of the most regressive political parties. The decision by the LNP to oppose recognition and consultation with Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander people was a political calculation by Peter Dutton and supported by his friend Adrian Shriner. Now, I thought to myself, Brisbane's LNP mayor would call out the base racism that's being peddled by the no campaign. But given how deeply involved the LNP are in that campaign, I'm not surprised that he doesn't. I cannot believe that all twenty LNP politicians that sit in this place would support the no campaign and advocate for the status quo. I have been impressed by Liberal politicians like Bridget Archer, Mark Speakman, the leader of the New South Wales Liberals, the Tasmanian Liberal Government, for breaking ranks and speaking out in support of the Voice. It's a shame to think that Brisbane's LNP is not in the progressive camp of the Liberal Party. The Voice is about recognition, it's about listening, and it's about better outcomes in the community. I simply don't understand why the LNP oppose that. Now, onto housing. I continue to be disappointed in the LNP and the Greens at a federal level teaming up to block new housing. What Labour's plans for housing this year means is investing over eleven billion dollars in housing and homelessness services. That means for long-term solutions, that means five hundred and seventy-five million dollars in immediate investment, a national housing accord and another three hundred and fifty million from the first of July next year, one point seven billion dollars from July this year for states and territories to invest in social and affordable housing, build-to-rent changes in the last budget, and an additional two billion dollars in financing for the National Housing Finance Investment Corporation. And what we've seen over the last week as well is additional support agreed to by the National Cabinet, an extra three billion dollars in performance-based funding and five hundred million dollars in competitive funding programmes for local and state governments to support new housing and new infrastructure to fast-track housing. But to try and fathom why the Liberals and the Greens have teamed up together to block new housing supply and to block the Housing Australia Future Fund is beyond perplexing. The Community Housing Industry Association Chief Executive Wendy Hayhurst had to say this about their actions. Every day the bill is delayed is another day that thousands of vulnerable people are made to wait for a safe and affordable home. That's what the Liberals and the Greens are doing. The rejection of this signature housing policy will prevent twelve thousand homes being built in the next financial year alone and the creation of thirty-six thousand jobs. Those thirty thousand homes that will be supported by this fund will be for women and children escaping family and domestic violence. They'll be for frontline workers, for veterans and for First Nations Australians. That's the Labour plan, supporting housing, while the LNP continues to stand in the way, and it's very disappointing. And to finish on women's facilities at council-owned lease sites. We just heard from councillor Howard that apparently twelve new facilities have been delivered in the last twelve months. So I assume what councillor Howard meant by that was that there are twelve brand-new change rooms catering for women and girls at council-owned lease sites. You would think they'd be screaming that from the rooftops, don't you? You'd think you'd see that all over TV. You'd think you'd see it all over social media. Sounds really great. But I really don't believe councillor Howard, when she just said that twelve new facilities have been built in the last twelve months, because the evidence just doesn't stack up. I presume what councillor Howard is talking about are a few of those Better Suburbs Grants to the tune of two hundred thousand dollars. Now, I'm not sure whether LNP councillors have these sort of magical powers that they can turn two hundred thousand dollars into a brand-new change room facility. But in our experience, they cost a lot of money, a lot more than two hundred thousand dollars. On the rare occasion that a club has a facility that can be retrofitted, and they are very creative and they have a lot of support from their volunteer committee, they might be able to get something done. The Zulmy Eagles is a great example of that. A two hundred thousand dollar investment is going to see facilities for women and girls, facilities that will allow women and girls to play AFL again at Zulmy. Because they led the way years ago in encouraging girls to play AFL, but they were knocked out of the competition entirely because council's facilities didn't meet standards. So they got two hundred thousand dollars and we're going to see the return of women's and girls AFL at Zulmy Eagles. Guess where that funding came from? Not council, state government, of course. Now, I was there, I was there in late twenty nineteen when the Lord Mayor, this Lord Mayor, went to the Brighton Bulldogs Soccer Club in my community. And he stood up at the gala day and said he was going to fund a new change room for women's and girls' soccer at Brighton. That was four years ago that he promised to do that. He delivered two hundred thousand dollars to his credit, which I supported. It's not enough. So four years has gone by, Lord Mayor, since you, through you, Deputy Chair, went to that club and promised new facilities to encourage women and girls to play soccer. And what has happened since then? Well, absolutely nothing. So to hear the LNP get up today and try and rewrite history and rewrite this strange speech that the Lord Mayor gave at the Matilda's community reception is quite incredible. What they admitted today is that there is nothing new. They are just continuing with the status quo. There is nothing new on the table despite an extra two hundred million dollars in funding committed by the federal Labor Government for a genuine legacy for that amazing tournament and that amazing show of community support for the Matildas. An extra two hundred million dollars from Labor. And what do we get from the LNP? Crickets. Nothing. Not a thing for facilities that are council-owned and that we are putting the pressure on community sporting clubs to maintain, let alone go and try and scratch together enough money to encourage women and girls to play sport. That is beyond disappointing, and the LNP won't get away with rewriting that history.
Councillor Hammond?
Thank you, Acting Chair. I just want to, I must stand up to speak about three things. There's a negative first, which is the Northern Busway, councillor Fiona Hammond eleven, and also the First Nations Garden. So first of all, on the negative, the Northern Busway, not only has it blown out from fifty-three million to a hundred and seventy-two million out on the north side, in a cost-of-living crisis, it is destroying the local businesses out here. Before those opposites say it's just about car yards, it's not just car yards out there. Audi is now affected. There's lawyers, there's engineers. I think there might even be a sewing shop that could be affected as well out there. But more importantly, they've taken away the left-hand slip lane on Kitchener Road, on Tugimpy Road, that is causing massive, massive amount of impact to the local streets in the north side. But this is quite scary. There was a fire. Now, some of you might have been following my Facebook and seeing me talk about this. There was a fire in one of the car yards where one of the batteries blew up. When the fireys came, two trucks, thank goodness, they are hard-working fireys, when they turned up to the car yard, first of all, it was difficult, very, very difficult to get access. And then when they tried to plug into the water to put the fire out, there was no water. So luckily, we had two fire trucks out there that had the water on board to actually contain this fire. If, can sign a car, a vet, as she rightfully said, if it happened across the road, it was a petrol station, there'd be a big hole in Kedron right now. It is absolutely disgusting that the state government, not only for two point five kilometres of road, have actually destroying businesses, destroying the road network, but switching off water so they couldn't turn off a fire. Big shout out to our fireys, you do an amazing job. And also, the people on the north don't call it the Northern Busway, we call it the Band-Aid Busway, because that's exactly what it is. Next, the councillor Fiona Hammond eleven, on the seventeenth of September. Thank you, Greg, councillor Adaman, for being one of my umpires. You didn't want to pick up a bat, that's okay. I will be bowling, and councillor Davis will be out there batting for us. But the best thing about this, it's all-inclusive. One thing I really love about this game is we've got blind cricket playing. There's two T20s happening at Gibson Park at Stafford on the seventeenth, starting at nine thirty. The blind bowlers. Lord Mayor, you'll be happy to, I'm not going to say what the announcement's going to be, but I will speak about this again. But blind cricket, let me just put it this way. Blind cricket has a rattle in the ball, which they roll and whatever. But when they hit the ball, and it goes flying through the air and stops, they can't hear the ball. So that just gives you a snippet of what the announcement might be on the seventeenth of September out at Gibson Park. Lord Mayor, I hope you can be there, because it's going to be a ripper. All the proceeds for the day go to my charity of choice. Michelle from Hearts of Purple, you do an amazing job. And she'll be there selling merchandise. She also has a second shop, which has great shoes, ladies. So if you ever want some great cheap shoes that are brand-new, that gets donated, I recommend going down there and supporting this charity. They have raised over a hundred thousand dollars on those ten-cent coins for their charity. And that was this year they have done that. So they are outstanding. They just don't talk the talk, they walk the walk. The First Nations Garden, everybody in this chamber knows that I had a very big soft spot for Terry Hampson, who was the previous, previous Labor councillor to myself out there in March and Ward. This man was outstanding. I want to let you know, Terry, that I'm the late Terry, O A M, I'm continuing your vision with the First Nations Garden out there at Huxtable Park. A big shout out to Josh, who's coming on board. We're getting new signage out there, and we're getting a yarnings circle. I'm sure, Terry, if you're still with us, or maybe you're looking down, and with deep pride, I am finishing your project and hopefully our schools, to learn so much more about our First Nations people. I support our First Nations people and always have. I was one of those lucky people, children, who were brought up with a strong Indigenous education in our family. education in our family. Not only was my father brought up with an Indigenous lady, but he also served as the Flying Doctors and did a lot of work for our community out there. I'm absolutely privileged and honoured, and Dad, I love you for it, that you taught us everything that you knew and passed it on to us about the fabulous First Nations people and their culture, which runs very, very deep in our veins. And again, Dad, I am very, very proud of you. I can't wait for this project to finish with the new signage. Sorry, Terry, I didn't like your signage, I didn't think it was very appropriate, but I love you and it would have been appropriate at the time, but that's all getting changed now. So come on down, everything's happening in Marchand. If you're bored or looking for something to do on the seventeenth of September, again, come down and support All Abilities Cricket. Not only do you have fabulous players like councillor Davis and I, my husband will be playing as well, but one of the young men on, one young man on our team actually has half an arm, and he is playing on our team. We are playing our Indian community, now I know they can be a bit competitive, so I have told them that my team is not regular players, so just tone it down for us a little bit and don't smash me out of the ball when I do my bowling. I'll be heading to the nets at Bradbury Park shortly to practise my bowling, and I'd like to thank everybody involved in that one. And that is it, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Hammond. Further speakers. Councillor Collier.
Thank you. I rise to speak on three items of general business. One, about a petition I've launched, secondly, about the Nappy Collective, and three, about a tragic incident that occurred in my community over the weekend. Firstly, I stand with my community, and today I've launched a petition in support of local residents to upgrade a very dangerous intersection in my community. Residents have, for too long, experienced near misses and recently a pedestrian injury at the corner of Barton and Hawthorn Roads in Belimba. I stand with my community, I have launched this petition today, and I hope that the administration will support my community's calls for it to be upgraded. We have been calling on the administration to do this for quite some time, I hope that they will finally listen. Secondly, too many families go without the basics when they are experiencing a crisis. And for many families, this means going without nappies. The Nappy Collective, this Father's Day, are aiming to collect four hundred thousand nappies to support these families experiencing a crisis. And they tell me that in Brisbane alone, they need to collect ten thousand nappies. So in my community, Lollo Pops Baby Gift Store, which is on Oxford Street, is a local collection point. I urge anyone who is able to donate, or you know, a lot of parents, you've got spares because your kid grows out of them, if you have any spare, clean, unused nappies, please do drop them off. I particularly want to acknowledge Lola, who is the owner of Lollo Pops, for her incredible advocacy in this initiative. Thirdly, I do need to acknowledge the very sad passing of a gentleman this weekend in my community. Sorry. On the weekend, there was a very tragic incident in the tight-knit community of Hawthorn, and sadly, a man has lost his life. It would be remiss of me to not acknowledge the significant contribution that Mr Hugh Walker has made to the local community, and I particularly want to acknowledge his family and all of those who knew and loved Mr Walker. May he rest in peace. I particularly want to give a plug to the St Peter's Lutheran College, who are rallying around Hugh Walker's wife, Julie, and have started a GoFundMe fundraiser. You know, losing not only your husband but your home in one fell swoop is just a terribly tragic incident. Our community is very close-knit, and we will be reeling from this loss for a very long time.
Thank you, councillor. Further speakers. Councillor Atwood.
Thank you, Deputy Chair. I rise to speak about two items tonight, the Combsley Beach Party and also the Brisbane Kite Festival that was held last weekend. Last Sunday, thousands of Brisbane residents converged down to the Manippi Parklands to celebrate a great day out with a simple, common goal to fly kites. This event was organised by our local Balmoral and Rotary, sorry, Balmoral and Carindale Rotary Clubs, and I want to say a massive thank you to Theo, Barry, Colleen, Hillary, and Gareth. You sold the last six months of your life to make the Brisbane Kite Festival come to life, and it was an absolute pleasure to work alongside you and help wherever I could. I also wanted to thank the Carina Menchon for all your help on the day to set up and pack down, and in particular with our traffic management. I don't think any of us could have seen one thousand five hundred cars converge within the five hours, and it was a bit of a nightmare, but they did an incredible job. We've got a lot of lessons to learn, but certainly we look forward to next year. It was our first year at the Manippi Parklands, as the Murray Re Recreation Reserve, where it's been held for the last eleven years, is undergoing extensive works, as Brisbane City Council makes it the best cycling facility in Brisbane. But Deputy Chair, I think we have certainly found our new home, and we won't need to go back to the Rec Reserve, as the kite flyers and the residents absolutely loved it. The kite flyers told us that they loved the big open space, allowing them to get a number of their big kites up into the sky. The residents also told us, so Kelly said, "I absolutely loved it. I think it is a much better venue than the old one. More shade, more areas, we're separated from all the kites with a great selection of food. Yes, parking and access from the Tingalpa side was tricky, but it was perfect from the Meadowland side." Jessie said, "It was a great day out, much better setup than last year. We got in around ten AM and there was no troubles at all. Great job to the Rotary guys for organising such a great event, the food altogether, and the kite flying was such a great event." We had, and then, sorry, and Kristen said, "We had such a wonderful time. Our four-year-old looks forward to this event every year. We got in early and didn't experience any queuing. We had our faces painted, kites purchased and flown, a sausage seal consumed, and snow cones devoured, all before noon. Thank you, Lisa and the Rotary Club for putting on such a wonderful event." So again, thank you to the Balmoral and Carindale Rotary Clubs. It's a shame the wind didn't blow a gale like it did on Saturday, but in all in all, it was great to see so many smiling faces on our Sunday at the Manippi Parklands. Now to the Combsley Beach Party. I want to say a massive, massive thank you. I think it's no secret how much every single person in this chamber loves the wonderful Andrew Ensby. But once again, there were so many others who helped to deliver this amazing park upgrade. So I also want to acknowledge Paul Songhurst, who took over from Andrew as he went on our long service leave, Shane from CPO Landscaping, David White, who was our sculptor, told me that he didn't think anyone could be as OCD as him, but when he met Shane, he knew that they were going to be a perfect pair. He said, "He was incredible to work with. I never thought I'd meet someone as OCD as Shane, and getting every detail perfect made me so happy." So thank you, Shane, you were a pleasure to work with. I also wanted to mention Basil, Sarah, Saphra, I'm so sorry, Daryl and Monique from our CPO team. Many of them came down to the Combsley Beach Party on the Friday night, and together, it was incredible to watch the children play and interact with the different play elements and to see their faces light up as they figured out how to activate the different water play features, and yeah, it was so wonderful. But I think the residents also had a fantastic night, as we celebrated it with the Lord Mayor. Jessica said, "We went there today, what an amazing upgrade and a beautiful space for nature play, great for such a big range of ages. Absolutely loved the hidden sensor rocks with water effects." Vanessa said, "The upgrade was very well-done, very innovative and clever. The atmosphere on Friday night was amazing." And Kylie said, "The revamp is so great. Thank you to everyone involved in making it happen. The kids are already desperately trying to get me to take them back." So thank you, Lord Mayor, and for all of your support and funding this incredible project. The Doughboy Ward, and I'm sure the Chandler and Morningside and Winter Manly and everyone on the east side, absolutely loving it, and I can't wait to start working on the next park project, and the Doughboy Ward thanks you.
Thank you, councillor Atwood. Further speakers. Councillor Strump, sorry, councillor. Yes, you were up first.
Thank you, Deputy Chair. I rise to speak on four items tonight. The, two, two, sorry, three, well, actually four events, actually, one coming up. Let me first start off with last Saturday, I was proud to accompany Labor's candidate for Lord Mayor Tracy Price to the India Day Fair event at Rummer Street Parklands. The reception was quite phenomenal, actually. I've been to the India Day Fair a number of times, but people that we came across were really, really interested in what Tracy had to say, and they were coming up and asking lots and lots of questions. It was really warm, friendly, and again, I think one of the reasons why she made such an indelible, I can't think of the word. Impression, sorry. Thank you very much, councillor Griffiths, is that she is a community person. She's an absolute community, outstanding community person, and you could just see when she was interacting with the people that she'd never met before. It was so, so easy, so comfortable, and so, you know, she's going to be quite an outstanding, and she is an outstanding candidate for Lord Mayor, and I'm sort of looking forward to being part of her administration after the election in 2024. Let me say, the India Day Fair, as I say, I've been there a number of times, and this year was an exceptional year, I believe, and it certainly was in regards to the entertainment, but the weather was just unbelievably good, right? Very, very good. Even when we were sitting in some parts of the stadium, we were sitting in the sun, it was still quite comfortable. As I say, they, there was, all three levels of government were there in attendance, so is the respect of those, of the three levels of government for this FICQ group that actually puts this together every year. I think they were expecting up to around about eighteen thousand people over the day, and I'm sure they achieved that because the stalls were just filled, you had to wait in line, and it was just a wonderful, wonderful day. It went very, very quickly, actually, because you were having such a great time. The other couple of events, certainly the Vietnam Services Day at Waikal in Boundary Road at the Nashos site, where the Forest Lake sub-branch undertook the service for the Vietnam vets. What a great turnout it was. They filled the chapel on-site, and they had a barbecue and everything afterwards as well, with a few drinks, as, you know, servicemen, ex-servicemen like to have a drink every now and then. And I must have spent, I thought I was going there for probably about an hour or so, but I sat down and we started talking, and about two and a half hours later, right? You know, I decided I better go home because I had a big day the following day, but it was, it was a really respectful and well-delivered service on behalf of the Forest Lake sub-branch, and I thank Steve Ford and Sharon Ford, who arranged, along with their committee, that arranged the service for a wonderful group, our Vietnam veterans. Let me also speak about the new turf wickets at Philip Place there at Forest Lake, as councillor Owen mentioned, the opening of those turf wickets, a great achievement by the, by the, well, of course, on behalf, well, actually, the lease for the site, of course, is through the WASP Rugby Union Club, and of course, with the Super Kings have taken up a sub-lease on that, and they've done some wonderful, wonderful work. There's a lot that still needs to be done, and councillor Owen and I spoke about that on the weekend. The first thing is that we've got to, we've got to put up a retaining fence near a creek so that the cricket balls don't run into the creek, because I didn't know how expensive those cricket balls are now, fifty dollars each, and you don't want to sort of lose too many of those. So that's, that's one thing, number one on my list, is to try to stop that loss of their resources initially, but we also have to do something about other infrastructure within that, within the, on that oval, and certainly, one of the ones that they would love to have, and it won't probably happen in a couple of years, is our lighting for that field. And that's, that's a big cost, it's a big ask, and we'll just have to hunt around and find out that pool of money that can actually support that. So I made a commitment that I would continue to work with them, right, to achieve what they wanted to achieve. Finally, the Forest Lake Festival is this Saturday. Again, our candidate for Lord Mayor, Tracy Price, will be with me. It will be a huge event this year, this is the third year, and this year, we actually had to close a road to expand it, and because it's, you know, it starts at about two o'clock and finishes, it stumps at eight with a big fireworks display over the lake, which is just phenomenal. I've seen fireworks on the lake over the years, and it's just such a treat to actually watch that, the reflection on the water with the fireworks and everything. But I just want to, Kylie, who oversees this particular project in her committee, with the support, huge support, from the Heritage Community Bank, this is the third year, and it just keeps growing, year after year after year. And I just, we're so looking forward to it. It looks like the weather's going to be good, so I just hope the bomb is right, and we should have a really, really great day. So if you haven't got anything on this Saturday between two and eight, even if you come for the fireworks at eight o'clock, it'll be a real treat for the kids. Thank you, Chair.
Councillor Messi.
Thank you. I stand to speak on two items, the kiosk on Boundary Road and also the Karilpa Derby. The kiosk on Boundary Road is a council-run, well, it's a council-owned facility that is run by Community Plus, West End Community House. It plays a really, really important role, particularly for First Nations people in People's Park. Unfortunately, this council facility is incredibly rundown and isn't always available for operation, from challenges with the roller doors that have injured volunteers, all the way to sewage issues with the toilets. It's got an important role to play in West End. It's the positive effects from what Kylie and the team from West End Community House do in that space have flow-on effects throughout that whole road. And while I have heard that there was some plans for design upgrades to the kiosks, I'm yet to see them, and I'm hopeful that this council will look at investing, particularly in that really important role for First Nations peoples that it plays, invest in an upgrade and look at this kiosk. Secondly, I'd like to speak about the Karilpa Derby, which is happening on the tenth of September, brought to the community by the amazing West End Community Association, a group of avid volunteers that deliver this festival that is a combination of food, stalls, performances, and community-based races, where everyone gets dressed up, obviously everyone is welcome. It is exciting to have the derby back, it's an incredible part that demonstrates the culture of West End, and I am very much looking forward, and I'd like to thank Harmony in particular for the role that she's playing, and if you'd like to volunteer, please just check out the WECA website. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Further speakers. Councillor Whitme.
Thank you. I rise to speak on two topics of general business. The first is the Hear and Say Charity Auction with the Quota Club of Winter Manly and Vietnam Veterans Day. On Friday night, I had the immense pleasure of participating in Quota's Hear and Say Charity Auction hosted at the Waterloo Bay Leisure Centre. Not only did we come together and raise over nine thousand dollars just in auction sales, it was good, but we also were treated to an unforgettable Budgie Smuggler fashion show, which, trust me when I say, it was class A, class A performance. What truly touched my heart, though, was witnessing the generosity that was shown in that room, not only by those bidding on classic rocky road recipes and Broncos jerseys and celebrating women in sport, but also... but also the bus boys who get shipped down every year on a party bus. I never miss an auction. My son had stolen my paddle and was bidding on two particular toys. And he was outbid by these bus boys who then handed the prizes over to my son. And it really did leave my son speechless, which was, anyone who knows him knows that that's an accomplishment in and on itself. I want to congratulate Quota on an absolutely amazingly successful auction and I cannot wait to be a part of it next year. And I really do value the positive impact that you have on our area. The second item of general business is Vietnam Veterans Day. Now, I'd like to thank councillor Owens for eventually making it down to our service just in time for her photo op. And I'd like to thank. I wasn't attacking, I threw you, chair, I wasn't attacking. I was thanking her for making an appearance.
Councillor Whitney, I think you may need to readdress that. Please continue and address any other people through the chair, please.
Now, I'd like to thank the Bayside National Servicemen's Association for including me in their very moving service in the morning, as well as the Wyndham RSL and the Manly Loader RSL for inviting me along to their mid-morning services as well. I also wanted to speak on Kenny Gant's recording. This was a truly eerie to hear, knowing the horrors that he was about to face. I highly recommend that everyone in this room gets a copy of the recording. And while you listen, remember that Kenny would be dead within weeks of this recording being made. No matter your views on service and war, it's important that we continue to take the time to remember and acknowledge our fair bearers' sacrifice. Thank you.
Further speakers?
Thank you, madam acting chair. I rise to tonight talk about a couple of initiatives in Maruka Ward that have been very successful. The first one I want to speak about is Free Koala Walks. This is a first for Brisbane and has been just loved by residents since we initiated it in mid-June. The Free Koala Walks have been done in conjunction with the Griffith Uni Environment Hub. And basically, we've formed a partnership where the hub or the environment hubs, some students from Griffith Uni will actually take residents on a walk into the forest, into Tui Forest, which is only, what, seven kilometres from here, into the forest to see happy, healthy breeding koalas. And it's quite amazing to see koalas in their natural habitat, another wildlife and flora and fauna in their natural habitat. And I've just been amazed by the response we've had from residents from not only in Brisbane but outside of Brisbane, who are coming along to these walks and really enjoying it. I've spoken about the, the amazing opportunity with Griffith Uni before. They have an environment hub that was set up 40 years ago and that was set up for the purpose of doing, of looking at urban bushland or preserving urban bushland in, in our city environments. And to think, 40 years ago, that was a topic. That's a topic that we are just now really discovering. And I think they're a world leader in that. They're certainly doing a brilliant job and it's been amazing to work so well with them. I'd like to thank Dr Wade, I'd like to thank Leah, and I'd also like to thank Brad for the work they've done with me. And also the ambassadors, the eco ambassadors, who are students from Griffith Uni who are actually leading residents on those walks. I've received nothing but positive comment from the hundreds of residents who've done that. Which leads me to the second initiative we're coming up. And it will be on Sunday, the 8th of October. And we'll be doing a, an evening event around koalas, jazz and blues. It'll be a bit of a festival at Griffith Uni. It will be in the car park, so it's, and in the eco centre. This is, for those of you who use the South East Freeway, as you're driving through, along the South East Freeway, you'll see two natural areas that you go through. This will be in one of those natural areas. And you enter that space and you'd swear you're in the middle of, of an incredible forest, not anywhere in Brisbane. And really, what we're hoping with that event is to be a mellow event, is to be an event that people come along, get the opportunity to see wildlife, see native flora and fauna and see, see what incredible wildlife we have in our city. Really looking forward to that event. I was disappointed that our own, I certainly made, I reached out to the administration. I was disappointed they didn't want to be involved in either of those events. The next thing I'd like to talk about is koala fencing. We've had success with putting koala fencing and flora and fauna fencing in along the South East Freeway. What was raised with me by residents when we did, we did a koala forum, we did a wildlife forum, was that they want to see better fencing. They want to see more fencing in other parts of Brisbane so that our wildlife isn't being lost. Certainly, the experts who were there were saying this is the way to go. And I know we've just received money or we're in the process of receiving money from the federal government to do an underpass on Tui Road. And part of that underpass, it's recommended to do fencing to actually stop the wildlife going on to Tui Road. So it can be done, it should be done. And we'll certainly, I'll be pushing for it to be done along Tui Road. I'd be interested in citing, citing some of the evidence or the advice. And certainly, I know the community would be interested in citing some of the evidence and advice that's saying you shouldn't fence roads. Be interesting to see that. We've got coming up this weekend in Maruka, the Maruka Family Fun Day, which is, has been an event that's been going on for over 25 years now. It draws in thousands of people. The Lions, we run it in conjunction with the Lions. We have a lot of free activities. And it's a really lovely afternoon that the community gets involved in. Really chilled-out event. And I always love having a stall there and having a chat to residents who come along that day. Then, on International Dog Day, we're going to have a puppy polluter. And the puppy polluter will be held at the Bowls Club at Maruka. And once again, that's a fantastic day. Bring your dogs along, come along, have a drink, have a bite to eat and show off your pup. Molly and I will be there as well. And I know Molly's really looking forward to that activity as well. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Griffiths. Any further speakers? As there is no further business, I declare the meeting closed.